So at about 6:10, I'll start rearranging everybody. We're doing the photos by school. So even though you're art and writing, we're lumping everybody together. That way administrators who are in the room will be able to jump into the photo. Ms. Leslie Hackett will be the one taking the photo in the public relations office. It will be on social media, so follow ALEAF ISD and you'll see it. The chain was plugged. Yes, please follow us on ALEAF ISD. We're on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Yes, teachers are more than welcome to be in the photo. This might be a little tight squeeze for certain schools because we're lumping ninth graders out on the main campus. Okay, so that's number one. Second, students, we're gonna position you guys when we come back in here. We're gonna do art students in the first few rows just because that way you'll be holding your art and we can see your art. Writing will be behind them. No specific order in terms of campus. We're just gonna ask for art students first and then writing students second. Parents, teachers, staff, you're more than welcome to sit behind them or on the sides. It is up to you. We do have a couple of reserved spots in the back, but otherwise every spot is up for grabs. But our idea is that as soon as the recognition segment is over, the students will see me motion like this. That's when I'm gonna walk you guys out. Again, our goal is to have everybody out of here by about 7 o'clock. So give and take, so you still have time to eat dinner and do your homework. Questions? So in about five minutes, I'll come back in and start rearranging everybody and then we're gonna get the superintendent and the school board for the photos. Again, my name is Tracy. If you have any questions. In the meantime, there is a restroom right outside this hallway. It is a side hallway. Please go to the right. You'll have two restrooms right there. For those that need a quick drink, we do have vending machines further down the hallway. We also have intermediate art installation near the vending machines if you want to check that out. Alright, thank you guys. So I'll see you guys in about five minutes. Okay, now I'm asking, do you mind holding up your pictures? I'm getting a picture over my phone. The lighting in here isn't that good for my camera. So we're excited going in. Pull up north. Alright. Ready? You look so thrilled to be here. Alright, great, thanks! So I'll be the one crying here. Are you guys together or just you? Just you. What's your name? Oh wait, what name did you have? So you're gonna walk up and you're gonna show your photo. That, we can show that and then you're gonna show the crowd. And then once everybody, all the art kids are here, then you'll see that. Show it done and then show it again. I'm not gonna call your names. I'm just gonna say when the art gold key recipients come to the front. Did you hear what she said? I'm not gonna call names. I'm just gonna say when the art gold key recipients come to the front. And when I call your na- when I call you to do that, as you walk up, show your artworks to the board that are sitting all back there and then turn around and face the audience and hold your artworks so that you can see it out here. Come on, everybody, let's see. And then, once you're, I'm gonna say a little about Scholastic in general that I've been talking about, what you guys want. And then, once they're done recognizing you guys, we get to leave. You don't have to stay in the whole meeting.
Good evening, everybody. The Board of Trustees have taken the independent school district as now convene. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone that's present. Our mission in ALEAF ISD is to work in collaboration with parents and the community to provide an exemplary education for all students in a safe environment. As the ALEAF ISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, adopt policies, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and communicate the district's vision and success to the community. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and the day-to-day operation of the district are the responsibilities of the superintendent. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees and not a meeting of the public. School board meetings are open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience participation is limited to the page of presentation portion of the meeting. These proceedings are being taped and video recorded. All recordings are posted, archived, and viewable online on ALEAF ISD District website in accordance with Section 551.128B1 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while listening to speeches. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in ALEAF Independent School District. At this time, please stand as Craig Ipan, Public Relations Specialist with Intervene, the Green Legion of Federal Legions, and the Texas pledge in our honor of the sun.
The Board, ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have the Elsack High School Air Force Junior over to the seat to present our colors and pledges. Now please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the East Texas, one state, and our God, one and indivisible.
And we all please join in warm silence.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm going to turn the portion of reading over to the superintendent so that he could share some more recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, board. Welcome everyone here. Students, parents, family members. I would like to, because this part of the agenda would be recognizing students. We have very small, extremely high accommodations, so I'm gonna ask our coordinator for final arts, Ms. Susan Trabaski, to come up and begin this introduction. We will see a lot of talented young men and young ladies. Thank you, Susan.
Good evening and thank you so much. We're here tonight to honor the Scholastic Art and Writing Award winners. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are the nation's longest-running and most prestigious recognition program for creative teens in grades seven through twelve. Submissions are jury by the luminaries in the visual and literary arts, some of whom are past award recipients. Canisters look for works that best exemplify originality, technical skill, and the emergence of a personal voice or vision. This year, students submitted nearly 340,000 works of visual art and writing to the Scholastic Awards. More than 90,000 works are recognized at the regional level and celebrated in local exhibitions and ceremonies. The top art and writing at the regional level then move to the national stage where more than 2,700 students earn national medals. National medalists and their teachers will be celebrated at the national ceremony at Carnegie Hall in New York City this coming June. Students receiving gold and silver keys in the Houston area are celebrated and on display through the Harris County Department of Education's local exhibitions and ceremonies. ALEAF's gold and silver key recipients will be honored next week at the Scholastic Art and Writing Regional Ceremony at the Ballroom at Bayou Place downtown. This year, for art, we submitted about 240 entries. And of those entries, we came away with 28 honorable mention. We had 31 silver and 10 gold key winners. So I would like to ask for the art gold key winners to go in and come up to the front. They actually have a sample of their work for you so that you can see what it was that they submitted. This work was on display at Spring Street Studios for several weeks. And yeah, so the community at large got to go and view all of these students' amazing work.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Williams and I'm the Secondary Language Arts Coordinator here in ALEAF. And I am proud to share this year that we had about 350 students submit to Scholastic writing this year. And out of those, we had 128 ALEAF students that earned recognition in the area of writing. These recognitions include 122 honorable mention awards, 52 silver key awards, and 24 gold key winners, one superintendent award winner, and one national gold key winner. Right now, I would like for the writing winners to come up to the front to be recognized. These are our gold key winners we're recognizing tonight. Each of the students' writing submission has been included in a binder for all of the board members. I would also like to recognize the teachers that are here tonight that have supported the students in getting their writing submitted. That is not an easy process. If you're a teacher, could you stand up here at three? And students, we want to recognize each and every one of you for your hard work and congratulate you on such a prestigious honor. Let's give them a round of applause.
So she beat me too, and I was also going to recognize the parents and teachers that are here.
Sorry, a quick question on this question. Was this open to boys and girls? Because I don't see any boys. Good job, ladies.
We also wanted to take a moment to recognize our national gold key winners or national winners. For art, we had a national silver medal. It's Kaylee Boo from Kerr High School. Would you come up to the front, please? Kaylee won a national gold key for her ceramics and glass. The piece called "Sword Sondo," which has a little bit of music flavor to it, which is pretty cool.
And we have a superintendent award winner, Khan Dane, from Albright Little School. Khan was the only student to receive this award out of 3,000 submissions. And she also received a 250 dollar award. Trina Zane from Killa Middle School. Trina earned the national gold key award and will be invited to Carnegie Hall in June. Thank you very much.
She was asking about the actual essays or laying the...
They're in the binders.
We'll work on that mail a little later. There were some guys who were correct.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask Ms. B. Jones to come forward and present the this month's donations.
Mr. Chambers, Board of Trustees, we get donations from March 2019. $40,000 Shell Technology Center, ALEAF ISD. $28,956 Houston Blue Bank Teacher Aid Mobile Unit, ALEAF ISD. $28,883 Karen France Incorporated, ALEAF ISD. $20,000 ICAP Energy, ALEAF ISD. $4,500 Mr. Clayton McKee, ALEAF ISD. $4,159.25 Canary Cafe, ALEAF ISD. $3,250 Houston Blue Bank Backpack Buddy, ALEAF ISD. $3,224.19 Houston West Chase Rotary Club, ALEAF ISD. $2,000 Legacy Community Health Services Incorporated, ALEAF ISD. $1,500 West Chase District Community, SNE. $1,373.14 Comcast Foundation, ALEAF ISD. $1,350 Rocket Science Day Space Center Houston, ALEAF Middle School in Albright. $1,000 Anthem Incorporated, American Group, FANE. $1,000 Music Doing Good, ALU. $725 Metro Engineering, ALEAF Calhoun High School. $625 Morning Donut, ALEAF ISD. $532 HEB Tournament of Champions Program, Kerr, FBLA. $527.56 MPM Investment Group, ALEAF ISD. $500 Centon Energy Chancellor. $500 Miss Rosalyn Gayton Taylor. Grant Hold, $144,610.42.
Thank you. Our standing job is done. Having a motion to approve the donation report. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Second by after time, all in favor. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm recognizing two business partners this evening. First, Mr. Henry Corruel, junior graduated from Kerr High School in 2007. He received his degree from University of Houston and Austin. Henry started 4.0 GPA Growth Productivity and Accountability LLC, who serves as the education consultant firm and provides enrichment programs for school districts across the state of Texas. 4.0 GPA recently won first place in a national business competition hosted by Cricket Wireless. He also serves as the president of the Liberian Association of Greater Houston. Since 2017, Henry's company has provided ALEAF homeless seniors with free textbooks for prom as well as provide free college and career readiness workshops. Ms. Corruel, please come forward. Next, I would like to announce a new business partner. Ms. Susan Cecilia is an environmental broker for ICP. ICP is the largest hybrid, or is broker covering Apex Treasury, Credit, and Equities. The broker energy and commodities provide institutional services, data, and analytics. ICP is in 31 countries, 43 cities, and has over 70 offices. As noted on donation report, ICP recently donated $20,000 and started office runs to our CTE department and school district. As of today, they have total donations of $40,000. Ms. Cecilia, please come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Did we, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you recognize the parents. Did we recognize the parents? Did they stand? Did we see them standing? The teachers, the parents that represent these students, please stand so that we can acknowledge you. Thank you so very much. We know that they can't do it alone. We appreciate all their talent, but we like all the support that they get as well. So thank you. And so, at this time, wonderful students and parents, you are dismissed. If you would like to leave, you're welcome to stay. Hang out with us. Thank you for all of those who decided to stick it out with us. Thank you. We're now to answer item number five on the agenda. The Board encourages and welcomes comments and inputs from our patrons, but we cannot respond, deliberate, or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the posted agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes and please be reminded that the Board policy prohibits the mentioning of an employee name when boys make a concern or a complaint. We have three presentations tonight. The first one, Ms. Maureen Mattson, M-A-D-S-E-N, Maureen. Thank you. And I ask for apologies, Ms. Maureen, if I didn't say your name correctly.
It's Mattson.
Mattson, thank you.
Ms. Andy, do you know me? We have your phone number. But anyways, I'm having, if we have my son and several other children that turned legal age of 18, they have been told by several life skills teachers to technically drop out of school. And I'm not naming the teachers in particular because we're not supposed to do that. They have been indirectly telling the children they're dumb, they're stupid, and bullying my child and several other children that they're not gonna accomplish anything but be a bad lady or a bad boy, walk in the streets and be homeless. And this teacher has actually disrespected my child when we were actually homeless at the time, when we were homeless for two years, or approximately about two years. And it just disrespects me and hurts me in my heart because I was homeless for a while and we were living in the car. And I wasn't running from shelter to shelter. And right now, we are back in the shelter again. I don't like that because that's not right to me and my child. I don't appreciate that because it's, the law states that we have the right to go to school wherever we reside last before we actually became homeless. We resided here in ALEAF the whole time my son was growing up. He was born in ALEAF. He wants to go to ALEAF schools. My other children graduated from ALEAF schools. My stepdaughter graduated from ALEAF schools. We never had this much problems with the other children. I know what my son has. I know what his faults are. Just teach him. You guys refrain from letting him use a calculator when he was in U.S. elementary, one of his chits. Sorry, I'm not posting your names. When he was in U.S. elementary, he was allowed to use a calculator. He was doing division with the calculator. They won't let him use the calculator after that in school. Ever since then, he has not been able to use a calculator. He's not being taught. He feels like he's a failure. I wish they would allow him to use, like they allow the other children in the other grades to use a calculator because my son and my other daughters have used a calculator. This Texas instrument calculator, I don't know what the specific name is, but it's the Texas instrument calculator. He's not allowed to use a regular calculator. Why can't he use a calculator? Why aren't they allowed to use a calculator? That doesn't make no sense to me. I had to go out of my way to find people to help me buy that calculator for my other four children. When my youngest child has calculators, he has one around his ID. He's not allowed to use a calculator. They're telling him he can't use it. The teacher, math teacher that sings and do all this stuff is giving my grades. I have him on nine week tablets twice a day, sometimes more.
Thank you so very much for coming to share information with the board. I'm pretty sure someone will be talking with you again. I'm pretty sure someone will be speaking with you again. Thank you. I'm sorry to tell you so, and I need to allow my other patrons to have their side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Madison. Our next presentation comes from Ms. Debbie Pepper.
Board members, Mr. Chambers, um, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, what I wrote on the card was student tragedy because something terrible happened during Christmas vacation, and we were all on vacation. And so I want to kind of just bring it up one more time, see if I can get some help for this kid. My name is Debbie Pepper and I'm a teacher at Taylor High School. I've been here in Nalee for 27 years. Uh, but I'm here tonight to talk about a very special 2018 graduate. Her name was Yileen, is Yileen Zhen, and she was traveling right at the beginning of Christmas vacation with her mother, sister and stepfather and got in a terrible accident. And they took her by life flight to Memorial Herman, took her mother and sister somewhere else and her father somewhere else. So by the end of the evening, she had become conscious and was released. I picked her up. We still didn't know what had happened to the rest of the family, uh, but it turned out that the mother and the sister both died that day in the accident. Uh, so we started a GoFundMe page for her through Taylor, some of us, the counselor and myself and some others. And then kind of hoped that people would see it, you know, but it was Christmas break. So I want to bring it back up. Uh, the hospital has now sent her a $38,000 bill for her helicopter flight to Memorial Herman. Um, she has also been given a $15,000 bill for her medical care at Memorial Herman. This is just the girl, just Yileen. She is a graduate, uh, fantastic kid, came from China, speaks Cantonese and Mandarin, spoke zero English when she got here in eighth grade and graduated top 10% of her class and accepted into UT. So she started at UT. Now the question is, will she be able to continue? Because she is obligated to these bills. The hospital is not backing down. Uh, her father, her stepfather's insurance has covered as much as it can cover. And so we have a GoFundMe page and I'm here tonight to ask you to look at it. Just, I have slips of little paper that you can find her name, uh, the GoFundMe page and just, just take a look and see if you can just give her a little something. Um, she's an awesome, awesome kid and was on your council, the superintendent's council for two years. Uh, and speaks perfect, perfect English. She's just a wonderful gal. And I'd like to do something to help her stay in college. Uh, her expenses are hers and she has to bear them. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Pepper. Thank you so much for bringing information into the field.
You want to bring those? Yeah, sure. And I gave some to Ava too.
Is this something that could be accessed and shared with social media?
Yes, it's easy. In fact, I went, I went and looked at it today just to make sure it was still active. And it is, it's on Google. And you know it, right?
Thank you so much. Our last presentation comes from Mr. Damon Marone.
Greetings, Damon Marone, ALEF ISD taxpayer, ALEF ISD parent. Um, I see that the priorities and the goals and the mission is still on the wall as well as on the website, so I'm assuming that we're still relying on those. Recently, I have requested a public information request with TEAs, the Equity Toolkit Report for the six elementary schools and improvement required here in the district. Executive Director Human Resources, sitting in the back of the room, stated that policies, procedures and contracts are written and implemented in a way that creates a revolving door of teachers in high poverty, high minority and lowest achieving schools. This would include the hiring of teachers from Nebraska, paying them stipends to relocate here to Houston and also paying them, uh, loan forbearance for their schools. They also did a paid hire wages than the teachers that are already here in our district. All right? Executive Director Human Resources goes on to further say that the district needs to develop policies, procedures and guidance for our school board and site-based decision-making council for recruitment, selection and hiring. His words, not mine. He pretty much stated that everybody in this room is not doing their job, all right? The board is responsible for governance. Everyone sitting in this section is responsible for day-to-day activities. My concern is that constituents such as taxpayers, teachers, parents, children, students, same thing, the district retaliates against us to the fullest extent and uses taxpayers' money to do so. So my, uh, my concern is that, oh, my examples are ALEF ISD Police Officer Troy Perry versus ALEF ISD Harris County Case Number 2006-02596. ALEF Student Chukwuchubu versus ALEF ISD Harris County Case Number 2011-04627. ALEF Energy Manager Assistant Rosemary Tucker versus ALEF ISD Harris County Case Number ALEF Risk Management Officer Raymond Brantley versus ALEF ISD Harris County Case Number 2015-32769. ALEF Computer Repair Technician Nguyen Trung versus ALEF ISD Harris County Case Number 2015-34922. ALEF Teacher Damon Marone versus ALEF ISD Harris County Case Number 2017-25766. ALEF Police Officer Larry Johnson versus ALEF ISD. ALEF Teacher Robert Green versus ALEF ISD and many other incidences that have been swept under the rug. My second concern is that last, uh, board meeting or, um, board meeting, the individual stood up and said Mahaney Elementary got a $1 million special education grant. And I'm confused in how in the world did Mahaney Elementary get a special education grant when I know I personally, uh, whistleblowed that they were falsifying special education grades in there. I have audio recordings. It's also cited in my, um, in my lawsuit against the district. I also have written documentation, handwritten receipts that I hand-delivered, the audio recordings and documentation to the special, uh, to the general council. The board has received that information. So how did you all authorize Mahaney Elementary to get a $1 million special education grant? What I'm noticing here is that when individuals whistleblowed against the district, you all retaliate, however, the individuals that are complicit to the retaliation are being promoted. Um, we've got some area superintendents over here that's sitting here behind me that was there. I specifically told the Assistant Superintendent Human Resources, who's sitting next to the Executive Director Human Resources about the retaliation. I specifically told them about the falsifying grades and guess what? They're still here. But Mr. Marone has been ostracizing, retaliating against the teacher that stole the field trip money and took the personal identifier information home of all the parents, still retaining their job. The, uh, tennis clerk who had a felony theft arrest retained her job. The un, uh, unsecured or unclear volunteer that was arrested for cocaine, uh, was a volunteer of the year at Mahaney Elementary. And lo and behold, in the faculty staff bathroom where the volunteer was allowed to volunteer, there was powdered cocaine found in the bathroom. All that swept up under the rug, but yet the people that do their job, do it convincingly and have evidence to back up their statements are being retaliated against. So I want to know what does it take to get those things that are on the wall? What does it take to get the things that are stated in the mission statement? Because I'm thoroughly confused. Each day, each month, y'all raise your hand and pledge allegiance to the flag. You state that this is what you're given and that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying at all. So I, maybe I'm confused. I would like somebody to explain to me that how the, how in the world the district continues to get away with the retaliation, that non-governance, that non, uh, uh, day-to-day operation procedures get the community's at fault when we voice our concerns about it.
Thank you, Ms. Marone. Thank you. Thank you. Forward moving to item number six on the agenda. Is there any item on the vicinity agenda in which a board member would have, would like to have a room for discussion? Six point three and six point four. Can I move by Ms. Key? I have a second.
Second.
It's been a second by Ms. Maureen to approve the balance. All in favor? Okay, Ms. Dr. Tom? Okay, so that's seven zero. All right, um, Ms. Ross?
Yeah, six point three was a, I think it was called a resignation report. Um, and one of the questions that I had, um, just because of my committee is, and this we do have several of the, um, for the resignation report, and I was wondering, uh, Dr. Howlett, if I could, or you could, give, uh, just a clarification on these that are residing? Were any of these on the list, uh, for potential non-military? And they gave, they were giving this off. That's why I would like clarification.
Want to provide that to you through board notes or?
Thank you, thank you. So make sure to write that down or you committee will look forward to your there.
And then the other one was dispersment reports. Um, is that, um, that's the one that the check registry was on there? Okay. So, um, there's a four that I was, uh, the kind of, I was looking at two from Center Gistics LLC Consulting, um, and I was just wondering if just clarification, who they are? Madison Staffing Solutions and MFP Management.
Well, I'll let you guys deal with it. Center Gistics, uh, a consulting firm that we have a five-year contract with, probably even a fourth or fifth year, that they help with, uh, management of each other. So part of the, part of the contract that was signed, Charles, was it four years ago, five years ago?
It was four and a half years ago.
Yeah. So part of what we do is the money we save based on the practices that we put in place and things that you, they get a portion of that as a part of their compensation. You keep, you get a portion of that.
They provide three energy specialists here.
They, we have three, we have energy specialists. We monitor energy usage throughout the district. And so they're compensated, their companies compensated with part of the savings that we realize as a result of the.
Okay. Um, so is that, is that was part of the, 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 uh, shared, the, the lights and all that? Is that part of that change?
You're talking about the retention kids, were they talking about? Part of it, yes, was. It was, part of what they were talking about was either learned from this process or things that they did, that they were recommending now. But it wasn't solely any part of the Center Gistics period.
Okay. So the total that was there and the, and those checks we've given the person, uh, was that's, uh, missing.
Yes, we're okay. You can definitely turn your mic on so that the whole board can hear.
I'm sorry, the, the, the total amount that was in the check, dispersment reports, that's just a, that's a.
That's their monthly billing for the amount, their share of the amount of energy saved since the inception of the contract each month. It's actually in months in the rear, so I don't know if that might have been December.
Okay.
So, um, they calculate the amount of energy saved based on kilowatt hours used based on the baseline when we sign, and then they get a portion of that savings as their payment for ongoing managing the energy with those specialists that they provide. So they do all the scheduling of HVACC and lights and so forth.
And Madison Staffing?
Madison Staffing is a one-to-one nursing agency that we use for one-to-one, um, required nursing, where we have to have a nurse, one-to-one, one nurse per student basis. And so we don't have enough nurses to handle the number of students that require it. So we have to provide, uh, based on the R and the requirements of coming out of that so that it's not an option to not have one.
Okay. And with that, is there any idea to maybe use those funds to hire more nurses or?
We've, we've constantly got openings, but it's, you just can't have that many, can't hire that many nurses full-time. They, they fluctuate down pretty consistently. So, um, we go through a staffing year of one-to-one nurses, but it's just every day.
It depends on the, uh, their R.
For those students, we, we have no choice.
Oh, sure.
Rather than, these are extremely fragile kids that, so, yeah, I think ideally we'd love to go to hire as many nurses as we could, as well as us, diagnosticians and speech public. But many of these families, like the one we're contracting with now, the nurses will be coming apart in a contract with them and they kind of. We keep, we get a portion of that.
They provide three energy specialists here.
They, we have three, we have energy specialists. We monitor energy usage throughout the district. And so they're compensated, their company's compensated with part of the savings that we realize as a result of the.
Okay. Um, so is that, is that was part of the, 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 uh, shared, the, uh, the lights and all that? Is that part of that change?
You're talking about the retention kids, were they talking about? Part of it, yes, was. It was, part of what they were talking about was either learned from this process or things that they did, that they were recommending now. But it wasn't solely any part of the Center Gistics period.
Okay. So the total there and the, and those checks we've given the person, uh, was that, uh, MFP?
Yes, for, okay, you can definitely turn your mic on so that the whole board can hear.
I'm sorry, the, the, the total amount that was in the check disbursement reports, that's just a, that's a.
That's their monthly billing for the amount, their share of the amount of energy saved since the inception of the contract, each month. It's actually in, in months in the rear, so I don't know if that might have been December.
Okay.
So, um, they calculate the amount of energy saved based on kilowatt hours used based on the baseline when we sign. And then they get a portion of that savings as their payment for ongoing managing the energy with those specialists that they provide. So they do all the scheduling of HVACC and lights and so forth.
And Maxim Staffing?
Maxim Staffing is a one-to-one nursing agency that we use for one-to-one, um, required nursing, where we have to have a nurse, one-to-one, one nurse per student basis. And so we don't have enough nurses to, to handle the number of students that require it. So we have to provide, uh, based on the R and the requirements of coming out of that so that it's not an option to not have one.
Okay. And with that, is there any idea to maybe use those funds to hire more nurses or?
We've, we've constantly got openings, but it's, you just can't have that many, can't hire that many nurses full-time. They, they fluctuate down pretty consistently. So, um, we go through a staffing year of one-to-one nurses, but, but it's just every day.
It depends on the, uh, their R.
For those students, we, we, we have no choice.
Oh, sure.
Rather than, we, these are extremely fragile kids that, so, yeah, I think ideally we'd love to go to hire as many nurses as we could, as well as us, diagnosticians and speech publicists. But many of these families, like the one we're contracted with now, the nurses will be coming apart in a contract with them and they contract with the various districts. So it's just, it's a, it's a source for us to have a consistent nurse.
Okay. Um, and then, and then the.
MFP.
Can I make a comment about Maxim first? That actually started when I was still working in the district. And for those graduate students that need that one-on-one care, we also need to make sure that everybody's single, there goes a nurse there to take care of those children. So if they were on our staff and they called in sick, we would not have the opportunity to have another nurse take over. But as an agency, they can send a substitute nurse for that student so that they don't miss any class.
Which age is it?
Uh, so MFP is fifty-one, age fifty-one.
So I have a question about the nursing program. Since we're talking about shortage of nurses, are we not growing our own nurses from the CTE program? Be able to?
That sounds like a lovely idea, but I think what they were just saying was the fact that when you are required to have certain nurses for those students. I mean, that's a nice idea we can talk about that on the other side, but for this particular one, for the company that's used, um, the, the other question that I would be asking is, since you mentioned that they have been here, in my mind, I would wonder, uh, Mr. Woods, are, are there any other companies have, um, participated in the, participated as vendors for, um, the staffing of the nursing? I mean, that's where, I know that we have to have them and that's what we're saying. We want to be in compliance and, uh, as well as those, I'm pretty sure with that, uh, company comes all the liability and insurance and everything that's covered for those students. We know that. So.
The, the notes that are high in the notes, right? And then how CTE is certified in those?
So it's. Somebody not there yet.
Short, short answer to your question, Ms. Butler, is yes, that's where we're growing. The CNA programs, we, we became hired, they don't, to start with, well, with the CNA. But as they earn, they'll be in, ultimately, hopefully, they're already in the, yes, now.
Sorry, are people in?
Yeah, the, the salaries for, yeah, the, the medical injuries.
You know, the thing you're talking about, after CTE, teach, uh, student graduates, how many years on the other side of that before they are able to come back to the, this point?
Yes, ideally.
I do not recognize the vendor MFP, so I can, I can research it and get into your board notes of who they are and what they do. They could be, could be even copier names. I don't know. I don't know, it's up to luck.
Ms. Brown, do you have any other, if you have any other?
No, those were the four.
All right. With that, I'm going to move to approve, uh, items six three and six four on the agenda. Are there any other, or do I have a second? Okay, I've moved to approve six three and six four. It's been seconded by Ms. Key. All in favor? I see, one, two, three. Please hold your hands up. I see one at the end. One, two, three, four, five. Five, uh, all opposed. Abstaining. Okay. Two abstain, uh, two abstain. Thank you so very much. Item number seven on the agenda, consider naming nominations for portions of facilities collected to the market specified by board policy. Mr. Woods, your effort.
Ms. Williams, uh, just before Mr. Woods starts, this is, and I think every board member was here the last time this came up. Part of the process, part of the policy is for you guys to approve of us advertising and seeking advertisements for the facilities that have been proposed. So we've done that and Mr. Woods is going to come back and share with you what we've received and obviously answer some questions. But ultimately, you're going to have the authority, if you will, to decide, do you approve what's been suggested? Take no action whatsoever or, or, uh, nicely chosen to. Anyway, that's, make sure that everyone was aware. So Charles?
Okay, so, uh, board, if you remember, uh, for each one of these gymnasiums or fieldhouses, we had a nomination, we took it to the advert, advertisement, we put it in Chronicle, uh, since the next communicator was months away, when it ran the Chronicle, but on our website. And then responses came to Mr. Icorn. And so I've included those responses for each one. So, um, if you want to, we can just go through each, um, area that we have a nomination that originally caused this to, to be advertised. And then I can tell you, for instance, first one, Elsie High School North Gymnasium, the original, uh, advert, or nomination was, uh, from in district, nominating Gerald Hartfield for, he was a former head boys' basketball coach at Elsie High School. And we received one, uh, informational request through the website from Rachel Stein. So if we go through each one of these and say, we have one nomination, so you can choose to, to one of the board members to, to confirm that nomination and then vote on it. Uh, in one of these, we actually have, uh, a second nomination for that naming. So the last one we'll get to, where there's actually two nominations. So we have one nomination for this one.
Ms. Williams, um, the paperwork that's submitted to us, there was one negative email that was received on this, I'm sorry, no, one, yeah, one negative email received on this one, um, nominee. Um, but I'd like to table that, not recommend this one, um, based on to, on that nominee, on that, on that email until we get more information. Because I would, I would like to see more background, you know, something like this. But just because we have email doesn't mean that it's, you know, always accurate.
I'm so, I'm so sorry. I have no knowledge of you talking about.
Okay, if you look in your packet that's on your table, there is a, a packet that's a ALI school nominations, a thick packet. And turn to, to, to three, which is the one by the assistant basketball coach of Hastings, um, four, five, six. On page six, there's an email. And if board members haven't seen that yet, it'll possibly be that and then, just, just to tailor it so we can get more clarification, um, more facts, things on this, because I don't have any other support to, you know, deny it or, or frame that this is a true information on this email.
And if a part of the process, this is having support, you would, as a board member, you would say, okay, we've got questions about this. You would ask us to do more research.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking.
Just so everyone knows, we, we do not do background checks or any research until you guys direct us to one way or the other. Unless there's something that we need.
But we received these, this information some time ago of those names.
Okay.
Did we not?
We didn't have this email.
Okay, so the only thing that's changed in the fact that is this particular?
After the advertisement, we received that.
Yeah, after, yeah, after.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issue about it. I mean, the facility, I just have to learn about a certain email to, to learn more about it. You know? That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, I have a question about this whole process. When I looked at the center, is that we're talking about one person responded, there's, you know, um, um, Glenna was on the, well, Houston Chronicle, Glenna was on the website, but the ways in which we got responsible, we only got one response back. Is that really, you know, a representation of the community or the people who even knew about it? So that's my concern is, um.
So, Mr. Woods, can you go back again and kind of, uh, explain that process? Because typically, go ahead and explain the process.
So in, in policy, if we receive nominations for a portion of a facility or for a facility, um, we bring it to the board to let you decide whether or not you want to go forward with seeking other nominations. In other words, to give it its, its, um, possibility for having other nominations by anybody. That process was, had occurred through the advertisement and through our website, and I think it actually went up on our Facebook page too. Um, so from that, we can receive its requesting, if anybody has any alternative nominations for that naming of that portion of the facility. So if, um, you can take that a multitude of ways. Either people don't care, people think that that was the best one, the most logical one, or they can say something negative, like, I don't want that person. But any of that's open to come in from the public at, at any time, up until we give a deadline. So we, we, I think we ran it for two weeks open. And those are the responses we got. So the original nomination was the, what started it for that particular gymnasium and that fieldhouse. And that, that justification was, was done such a way, but it was, it was not a nomination, it was named who was doing the nomination. It had a lot of background information about why and, you know, et cetera. So, um, anybody had the opportunity to nominate alternative names. So if we name a brand-new facility, the same thing would occur. We would have an advertisement. We say, we want to name the, the multipurpose center, we want to take nominations for that. And it could be people's names, it could be named after some inanimate object or, or purpose. And so that was, same thing would occur. We could take an initial nomination or the board could direct us to go seek nominations without any, anybody coming up and initially saying, I would like to nominate somebody's name to that facility.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. So based upon the information that's already been provided by one, two, three board members, we will table, table, um, the naming of, uh, the gym at this time.
Okay, Elsie South Gymnasium, the nomination taken was for Laura Dawson, who was the long-term, um, head girls' basketball, uh, coach at Elsie High School and was, the nomination came from, uh, former players and, and current employees.
I would like to see that.
So I make, you can, so I make a motion to, um, to approve for the naming of the Elsie High School South Gymnasium for Laura Dawson, former Elsie High School girls' basketball coach and assistant athletic director.
Okay. Hang on one second. So it's been, it's been moved by Ms. Moreno. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Key, all in favor of the naming of the south gym to Laura Dawson. Let it show that it is six, zero, um, all opposed, all abstaining. Six and one abstaining. Mr. Woods?
All right, the next one is the Hastings, um, South Gymnasium. The nomination is for, it's to be named Bob Wall Gymnasium. Bob Wall was former head girls' basketball coach at Hastings High School from three former players.
They have a motion to approve the naming of the south gym to Bob Wall. It's been, uh, moved by Ms. Key. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Trum, all in favor. It shows six, all opposed, all abstaining. Let it show a six, zero, one abstaining. Next one, Mr. Woods.
Next one is the Hastings High School Fieldhouse, which is currently under renovation, uh, to be expanded. Uh, the nominee, uh, is Bobby Stewart, who is a retired former head football coach and athletic coordinator for Hastings High School, nominated by, um, several coaches and former players.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the naming of the Hastings Fieldhouse? May I have a motion?
I have a question on this one. Was this an email or was this a letter?
This was a letter.
Because it does name that onto it. I mean, I see a bunch of names on there and just.
Oh, right at the bottom.
Oh, no, I just don't, I just, you know, I think all kinds of.
Mr. Woods, and, um, these are all the individuals that came together to name the?
To make the nomination.
The nomination of, sorry. Just wanted to be clear that they were all together. Do you have any other questions, Ms. Moreno?
No.
I'd like to move on naming the, um, Hastings Fieldhouse by the Stewart. May I have a second? Been seconded by Mr. Trum, all in favor. I'm sorry, Mr. Wood, my apologies, Mr. Wood. All in favor. Okay, all opposed. I'm, I'm sorry, do I do that again? Let's catch that on the video. All in favor of naming the Hastings Fieldhouse, um, Bobby Stewart, all in favor. Okay, not trying to push anyone, but I, I think I need to slow down if people are reading. Okay, so all opposed, abstaining. Okay, six, zero, one abstaining. Thank you. Mr. Woods?
And finally, the ALI-Taylor High School Fieldhouse, the nominee is nominated by a current head coach, uh, is Tom Gerber. He was a former head football coach, athletic coordinator and athletic director before he retired.
Uh, Mr. Woods?
Yes?
We have two on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, we do. We had one come in anonymous, um, to also name that Drake Sharp, who was also the former X Elementary principal. So those are the two nominees that we received.
So I'm going to ask the board if there are any discussions based upon the information that you received, any discussion?
I would just like to say that from that letter, that Drake Sharp was a very good principal. And Mr. Gerber was a real.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And this one, abstainers.
I just, I mean, when you have these situations, you feel one's more deserving than the other? You feel like you're deserving or?
So.
Considering, considering the facility.
Right, you know, like Mr. Trum, Gerber, and, you know, like, this, uh, Drake Sharp, you know, I mean, they look good, but the thing is that this is a fieldhouse, so this is not. So, you know, like, if you name a facility, if a principal was named, I would name after school or something. And not, you know, I mean, because, I mean, that's the way I see it. I mean, I mean, they, you know, athlete is athlete, you know, like, if they deserve it, but then if this is going forward, then you got.
Did, um, Principal Drake Sharp have a connection to athletics? I'm not familiar with the gentleman.
I'm not aware of him.
He was principal of Pitt's for a long time and passed away many years ago.
Okay, board, here's what I'm going to ask, because I'm looking, did you guys receive any more information on Mr. Nadia?
It was that last page had that one on it.
The last page is the email received.
And that was the only thing, though.
For, for that nominee, correct.
Did that, was, but that wasn't in the email?
It wasn't in the original listing. This came after the, uh, it came after.
The original recommendation was for Mr. Gerber, Ms. Kepke.
Mr. Woods, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to ask that we table this one as well until we get more information. I would like to, I would like to have more conversation about this.
I'd like to make a comment on this one particular situation. I know that in the, in the, in the ten years, um, Tom Gerber was, um, a coach, the assistant athletic director, and during his, during our time, he was promoted or, or received a, um, position of athletic director. At the time, that was a big focus on our, uh, board and the school district, was to really do a lot of work at the, um, collegiate level and getting the exposure to the kids, getting them there just academically-wise, athletic-wise, and really get that exposure for our, our Ailing athletes, um, to get there. And he really, he really shined. He did a lot. He worked, he worked hard, uh, with his athletic directors, and I think he passed it on to the current athletic directors, and it's continuing. Um, I think in his time, we've seen a lot more. I, I, I'd like to table it, but I, I almost wouldn't want to just table it as a fieldhouse. Um, I think what he's done with the district, in my personal opinion, is more than just a fieldhouse. He was more than just a coach at Taylor, he was more than just a head coach there. He went on and did a lot for all the students, all the athletes of ALI. So, yes, Mr. Woods, I agree with you about maybe tailoring that. And then, um, you know, maybe, I don't know how about, if we make a reservation, but maybe naming of the. I think what he's done with the district, in my personal opinion, is more than just a field house. He was more than just a coach at Taylor. He was more than just a head coach there. He went on and did a lot for all the students, all the athletes of Ailey. So yes, Mr. Woods, I agree with you about maybe tabling that. And then, you know, maybe, I don't know how about, if we make a recommendation, whether maybe naming the athletic office, district office instead? But that's another, that's another, another day in the story.
Another discussion.
Let him do something on that, so...
Absolutely. So give us about two weeks to have more conversation on this at the next, I'd like to table it for the next board workshop. If that's okay to you, board. I mean, obviously, someone thought very well of the principal as well that they sent that, so...
To your point, Ms. Moreno, if that's something that you personally want to, to nominate that recommendation as part of the process, we can definitely...
And we can go through that process as well, because the board can make the recommendation as well.
Don't you? And then do the naming and request that naming in process? Is that a particular? Yes, it is.
I'll mention, one of the other ones that we've already voted on to make Laura Dawson or name Elsack South Gymnasium after Laura Dawson, I think it's important to note that one of her students at Elsack High School, which she was coach there, is Marla Brumfield, who is currently our assistant athletic director. Marla also played in the WBNA.
Do we have any?
Thank you, Mr. Woods. I appreciate it. Board, at this time, I would like to, let me see my notes. I would like to, at this time, um... Right, absolutely. That's what I was thinking. That's, that's exactly what I was thinking, because, board members, if you know that Ms. Williams has been, I have been talking with you guys about time, and I am very pleased that my board members are all here and it's 7:30. But there is a report in which I had moved, but I would like to move that report up, if it's okay. Here's what I would like to do at this time, the... Okay, thank you. Because I want to get that health plan ironed. I would like to move, I have number 10 up at this time, the report on the priority campuses, and then we'll go back to the dual one-way language and the health insurance plan. Do we have guests here for the health insurance? We did, where?
But from the board.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I'll check off.
I just wanted to make sure that he was in the room.
You can, you can bump, you can bump down.
So at this time, I, if that's okay with the board, I didn't hear you say yes, if you want to hear about the priority of schools now. Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Mr. Chambers, tonight we are going to provide an update on our priority campuses. For the purposes of efficiency, we're going to have various superintendent Nancy Trent. She's going to lead this updating report. We also have our principals of those campuses that are here with us tonight, and of course, Dr. Page is, is right there in case there are any additional questions. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up Nancy.
Good evening, board. You should have received an updated PowerPoint with all the data that we added since the original report was put in the, in the board notes. Okay, so I'm going to be using that during my presentation. So the last time we met, Dr. Page gave an update in December of how our six priority campuses were performing in relation to their performance on their DCA one. And, you know, when we have these district permanent assessments, those are informing our instructional practices and also the adjustments that we need to make afterwards. So since December, we've had additional data that has been generated and wanted to share that with you. So, so you'll know when we originally created this presentation, we only had our mid-year ISIP and iReady math data. Since then, we added the DCA data. So we want our principals and our central office support team to really think about and reflect about the questions that are on this slide. We ask them, what instructional adjustments have they implemented? What have they struggled with? And what opportunities do they have? What have they learned? And what are they proud of? So we're going to share some highlights of the data and the answers to these questions as we go through our presentation tonight. So since we met in December, all of our campuses took a writing DCA. Fourth graders take the writing exam, as you know, and we only have one DCA for writing every year. Looking at this data, we know the district performance comparing last year's DCA performance to this year's DCA performance, the district had a difference of 1%. Looking at our six priority campuses, you'll see Horn Elementary exceeded the district, and as a matter of fact, Horn was number one in the district for their performance on their writing DCA. They increased 17% since last year. Congratulations, Horn. So talking with Mary and, you know, what it, what they're doing at Horn, of course, I work closely with Horn. I see all the hard work they're doing. Their fourth grade team is really pulled together, and they've really stuck to the writing teaks. They've been very intentional with that. And in thinking about how, how they were able to achieve such wonderful gains, some of the responses from Horn just are that the STEM program that they have this year, this is their first year as a STEM school, that program requires them to do writing in all content areas. That definitely has been an assistance with their writing program and just their focused and reflective team of teachers in fourth grade writing. We also see some struggles at Best Elementary, but looking at their data, we know that their work involves looking deeper at the standards. So sometimes we, we talk about, well, we're going to work on revision and editing. And that is a very broad statement to make. So I know their teachers are now working on, okay, what standards? What specific standards do we need to focus on? And they're focusing on those standards to create more gains moving forward in their Overall, adjustments in writing have been that we have started our after-school tutorials and writing camps on Saturdays. Our central office supports that work through helping plan activities and lessons with those teachers who are implementing those camps and those tutorials. Also, our writing blitz has begun. We officially kicked off our writing blitz the week before spring break, although some campuses actually began their writing blitz sooner. And our central office actually developed and shared their writing blitz plan with all the language arts specialists, and they're also guiding campus plans as there might need to be some tweaks at the campuses from that writing blitz plan. We also know that at some campuses, we have novice specialists in language arts, and we sometimes have specialists that are absent for medical reasons. And so our central office stands in and helps work with their IOT to make sure that the leadership skills are still, you know, available to the teachers that are working in their writing content.
Ms. Trey, can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
I know the presentation, and I, I may be sound like I've broken a record for the next 30 minutes when you do this, but I've been looking at a lot of videos of some of the data programs, and I was providing a video of some district in 2008 of some of the districts and working on data and so forth. And there are these tough questions, and they're asking, questions that we don't want to ask or that we don't want to talk about in open rooms and discuss them. I would like to see, as a board member, as a community member, as a past parent of Elsack students, what's happening at each campus? I know, I know they're doing extreme hard work and things, but what's very unique? What's happening at Horn, up 17%, where other districts, other campuses are down five, down one, breaking even, or so forth? What information's being passed on between the different campuses? What collaborative work is being done and so forth? Again, going back to our equity training and classes that we did, I don't want to pay no rush. I mean, we got six campuses, six principals back there, you know, busting their rares every day, you know, teaching our students. You know, they're on the front line, and I want to see what's happening at those campuses. I want to hear what's happening at campuses and not go over a slide on writing in about a minute, you know, and then skip on to the next part, you know? If we have to have those conversations, I hear, go to your next slide, please. There was a question, there was something you stated, novice or absentee specialist out of the problem. Well, which campus is that a problem at? Is that happening in best? Is, is Horn having that same issue? Us and Horn, remember, those are the questions we've been asking since December, from past December, of what's happening? You know what I'm saying? That's a great presentation, great data, it's an overview. But we need to get into the deep part of it, and that's what we've asked our superintendent to provide to us. And I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing it, so this may be a broken record as we go into math and go into, you know, I know that. But this is, I mean, rest of the board, I don't know if y'all are feeling the same or comments, or if this is what you're happy with, but this is, this is not I'm happy with it. And these are tough conversations that we're going to continue to have month after month after month until we get those teachers, those principals that don't have to come into here and face us because they're busting their rear to work out there.
Exactly.
Then the teachers, that's on the teachers. There, I know y'all are working hard, you know?
Yes. And so, so for the purposes of tonight, you know, the thought was to provide an overview of what's happened with the work regarding these six campuses.
I understand, Ms. Williams, but we've had two meetings in the past that were overview. We had a big roundtable discussion, it was an overview. We've had, we've had a retreat that was going to be, it wasn't wrong in a retreat. And we asked about it, and it was like, we're going to get a detailed explanation of what's happening at these campuses, and we want to know what's happening.
Well, we certainly, I mean, we can provide the details of what's happening specifically at each campus. We can provide that to you.
So, Ms. Williams, in a matter of time, I personally don't want to sit here for an hour reviewing and overviewing and reviewing. I'd like to table this conversation, which we get again and get the information that we, as a board, have been asking for.
So can I...
I mean, I know you're doing hard work, Ms. Trey, and I know the stuff you're putting, but I'm saying this is not what we...
This is not what you're asking for.
Not what I have been asking for. Please, other boards speak up. I mean, if this is me out of line, then tell me.
No, you ain't out of line.
No, I'm not going to say that that's you out of line. Every board member at this table has a right to say what it is they are expecting to see. And we, this is one of those areas where we have to keep asking for it until we come to a common understanding of what it is. Okay. Ms. Butler, you were saying?
So there was a report that you guys gave last year, what was broken down by campus. It was an Excel spreadsheet, and it showed different factors and different issues that were being solved. And so it was like, oh, line, here's what we're working on, goal two, here's what we're working on, here's how much we've accomplished. That, exactly. That's getting a lot more detail versus this, you know, brush view, because I'm, I'm saying this for, I'm sure others, that we are actually watching and going, we can't answer what's happening based on this, what's going on with each campus, because each principal is going to have to account for what's going on on their campus and not collectively. Each teacher is going to be evaluated on their campus, and we don't want to just say, "All six of you, so sorry," and lump you all together. We want to be able to see what's happening at each campus, what works at each campus, and maybe those students can learn from something. Ms. Moreno said.
Well, we certainly do have the details and the updates on the TIP plan, so we definitely could do a campus-by-campus TIP. So if that is absolutely what the board is wanting, that is what we can prepare for and do. So if you do not want us to go on with the presentation tonight, we absolutely understand that, and we'll do whatever the board is asking.
Okay. I'm going to let each one of the board members wait, and I think who's next? Ms. Key?
I would like to see also correlated to the risk load factors and what each school is facing as far as the risk load.
Okay.
Someone's taking notes. Thank you, Ms. Trey. I see you taking notes about your statement.
I would like to hear audio, too.
Okay. I think that the best result is, you know, like, you forward, you know, like, you do this presentation, can we have the detail? That's why we can read ahead, and then that way, when we see this, then it's an overview, you know, just like Ms. Moreno said. So like, we concern about the sixth campus, and of course, we know that the principal works very hard, but, you know, if we can know the details going on, and then so by the time we have a board meeting, then we look at it and go, "Okay, we got it." You know, because with the overview like this, like earlier, you presented Horn, you know, exceed the lot, and why all the campus. Of course, I know that the geography, the student, and all that also, but also, we, like I said, we want to know the detail, why this campus is doing better, what was the reason, what they did, they do to help with that, what program they implement, and things like that, so it would help for all of us to understand that. So when you have the, the overview like this, then we can look at it and go, "Oh, okay, we read all that, and we understand why we're having..." Thanks a lot.
So what I'm thinking that's going on, and I could be wrong, I'm going to let the board, you know, correct me as well. I appreciate this, and I guess I've been a board member for so long that I've seen so many of these come through. I know we celebrate the moments, and in the report, it looks like moments are being celebrated. But I think that, from what I heard, this conversation is so far different than the roundtable conversation and the data that we received. It is very, it's easier to take that data that we received and look at it as a baseline and then see where we've gone from that point to that one. And I'm going to rely on Ms. Bro, who deals with data a lot. I think that that's what the expectation was, and I'm sorry that we had made that very clear. I think that we have also asked along the way, we did, we asked along the way to find out if there was growth along the way. I know that this is saying that. I think what I'm hearing the board say is, it may say it, but I don't see the details. I need to, we, this is a board that wants to know. And believe me, no one's trying to go below the governor's line. No one's trying to tell the principals what to do at your campuses. You know what to do. You know what you're doing. And I often say, we are wonderful with teacher E times, education E times, but we're horrible at breaking it down where everyone in the room could understand it. When we all came together at that roundtable, it was very, very clear, based upon the data that we saw that TEA put out and the things that we were able to compile, it was very, very clear where we stood. But at this point, when you look at this report, how can I do a comparison? This is, this is not apple for apples. This is kind of different. So I have a board member, and I'm so sorry, because we put this off again, and, you know, but I have, I agree with the board member until we see the report in which we want, which means that we're going to have to have a conversation about what it is that we really want to see, so that you guys could hit that target.
And to make it on the record, I don't know if, again, this is a meeting of the board and about the board, but we have certain roles that are set up by this date that we cannot just, you know, over a cup of coffee, someone will sit down, some of us will sit down and talk about the different campuses and what's going on. There's open meetings, requirements and things that we can't do, more than three people, things like that. So I can't call Ms. Williams and have Ms. Bro and Ms. Butler on the telephone calling, "Hey, let's talk about Best Elementary and let's see what's going on over there." We can't do that. You know, we'd be in violation, we'd find there's issues with us as a board. We can't do that. So this is the reason why this platform, this table, is when I can promote that conversation. And then to bring that conversation so we can have that. So it's not a matter of, okay, yeah, we're teaming up on, you know, administration, or we're doing this. It's, it's the law, this is the way we have to, we have to do it.
Yeah, it's kind of enforcement that the only way that we can have conversations about what it is that we want to see is either single board members send information, but that's unfair to the rest of the, the other board members. So once it comes down like this, it's the only time that we can communicate what it is that we're looking for.
I'm sorry. I'm not even going to interrupt you, Mr. Woods. I was going to say this is, it is not uncommon, as you know, if you've been on the board for a while, if, if a board member keeps asking the same question, and you keep giving the wrong answer, and whatever that answer is, then we bring, we can bring that one board member in, or even two. You know, not the rest of the board, but, okay, Ms. Moreno, we're going to bring you in, we're going to, okay, spell out what is it exactly that we need to share. If indeed, if it's, if nothing else, then we can bring, in many cases, it helps everyone else. We had a previous board member that used to ask questions about funding, about attendance and all that. And I threw him in and tried to give a detailed explanation. But until, and not to the point now, but I think that's what needs to happen right now, from your perspective anyway, so we hear exactly what you're asking for, because I believe if I'm just watching other board members nod their heads and comments that you're making, that you're going to be asking some questions that everyone else is... I don't know, I mean, I'm sorry, I'd like to see some, some more discussion of collaborative, you know, like, example, a principal come up with Ms. Trey, who are the areas, and then, and come and says, "Okay, here's Best. This is what's happening. This is the nuts and bolts of what's happening, Best, this is what we're doing." And then Horn comes up and does the same thing, and we had that conversation, we're like, "Oh, wait, okay. Best has this equity issue, this, this issue over here. They have these terminology that, that you use, the risk..."
Risk load.
Thank you. The risk, and kind of compare that, and that's it. To do a baseline, we have to develop a baseline. We have not seen a baseline.
Let me, let me add something. Risk load came after that conversation. I don't want to put risk load into that right now. I don't.
I know, I'm just saying, this is a, a title we transitioned of what's happening. I know, I'm just saying, this is a, a, a time that we transition of what's happening.
At the time, we talked about accountability. We did not have this low information there. I'm going to ask the board, in order for us to keep it in the same zone that we were in before, we're going to go back and refer to the information and the data that we received, because everyone saw those reports, and they well understood. Because we had a conversation, Ms. Butler, I believe, about we wanted to see it broken down by campus, we wanted to see it broken down by demographics. I think people were very clear that they wanted all of those, the details. And we did hear some things that it takes a while to compile, and things like that. We had no problem with that, but that was when, September?
September.
September, right.
But Ms. Williams, I respect the comment that it didn't mean like that. But since then, we've had two trainings, we've had two workshops, we've had things where you brought in a gentleman on equity. Then we've had the retreat, and we've had things on risk load, we had that. So, you know, me personally, I don't want to go back to September, October, or in July, or when we first started. We've been privileged, and we've been exposed to more information, so it hasn't been for. And that's what I-
I, I, I do agree with you. I don't, I'm not opposed to that, but, so, there's a such thing as mapping and layering things over, and I think the first, that baseline is the information we started with. The next thing is the results, and then we can look at the risk loads on top. But I, I want to make it very, very clear. I don't want to throw the kitchen sink out there, and then they come back, and we're still not there.
I don't want to waste our time either, so, I mean, if we can have more conversations, maybe two, in a workshop, or, you know, discussion on that is another time.
Thank you. Ms. Bro?
So, I'm not going to rehash what everybody else said, but what I do want to bring out and is just, you know, writing, and we know that writing last year was, was an area that we struggled with. What, now, the plans that was put in place were supposed to be the, you know, we were going to really do something different, we were going to go in, we're going to get all of the support. So, that's, that is adult input. That is, are those behaviors. So, what I look at, my brain goes to, what is the output? What is the student outcomes? And so, when I look at these percentages, that there's something drastically different from last year, but the student outcomes are basically the same, that would cause concern. And then, this outline, this 17% increase, that should, I mean, what is going on there? I would have, you know, there would be some, some things that I would do to find out exactly what's going on, and how can we replicate, what, what can be done there. The other thing that, just in thinking how we're going to receive information next time, I have consistently asked for data to be disaggregated by demographics. So, again, I've consistently asked for data to be disaggregated by demographics. When we did the equity toolkit, which is truly just a piece of equity, there were some things that was put in the original plan that was not done. We have here two that was not done. How about, what could have happened if we would address those things that we said we wanted to do, put those in place? How might that have impacted these numbers now? So, what we're trying, and I think this is what Rick is trying to say, we understand that you all are working hard. Trust and believe we do understand that. But what we want you all to understand is that we are responsible to the public, we are responsible to those who, who question us, and we have to dig and know what's going on, so that when we make decisions in regards to budgets, approving programs, and that, those other things, that we're doing them with a, a deep level of knowledge. Because we want to, we want you all to understand that we are truly concerned, truly concerned.
Amen. All right. So, with that said- So, with that said, I'm going to respect what Mr. Moreno has requested at this time to table this conversation, and then, we begin to develop information. I need board members to send information, so that it can come out, do board notes, on what it is that you would like to see, so that collectively, Ms. McGonigal can receive that. We can have conversations as well, and we'll, we'll work through on what that is, and then we'll come back with the time when we can have this presented again.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. Board, first introductions. For those who don't know, this is Bob Tracy with Gallagher Associates, a benefits consultant for-
Hi, Larry. Twelve years. Ms. Woods, one second. Thank you, principals, for being with us. Thank you so very much. We look forward to hearing from you again. Now.
More than that, longer than that. Anyway, since this is a legislative year, and we have a lot going on with the budget and the capital right now, with, we don't know exactly how many dollars the school districts are going to get, we thought it pertinent to review the health care plan, and where we are right now today, heading into budget season, and kind of the things that we're, we're looking at for, for consideration of strategies for the next few years to, to deal with the continuing increasing cost of healthcare zone.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. Great to see you all. Again, my name is Bob Tracy, Admiral Life and Health Insurance Counselor, by license with Gallagher Services, and I'm glad to be here. So, as Mr. Woods had just said, we just want to get you all up to date on how the plan has been performing in the most recent few years. And let me see here a minute, that this past year, we definitely had a spike in health care costs, and we're going to talk a little about why that happened. And then, just as importantly, about the plan, to give you a little insight into it, we're going to talk a little about the future, where we're heading in the futures now. So, as we move forward, feel free to answer any, ask any questions. And initially, we're going to talk about some statistics. Now, for some of the board members, just very quickly, we run our health plan on a self-funded basis, not a self-insured basis. There's a kind of a misnomer there. We have insurance, we have reinsurance for campus for big losses. But short of that, we fund our own health plan. We hire debt now to administer our plan, to provide networks, to provide disease management functions, care management. At the end of the day, this huge covered entity that we have costs this school district in subtotal over $50 million. It's the most efficient way to run this health plan. We have had very static costs over periods of time. But again, we pay a very small percentage of our costs, probably 10% of hard dollars to an insurance company. The rest of it is staying here at this school district, with a combination of funding between what the district kicks in, and what we gain out of the payroll deduction, and we begin just to pay our bills. And there's a lot of components that go into that. But simply put, what I first wanted to show everyone right now is how we break this thing down. You can see here on recent cost trends per employee per month here, that when you look at this, what we simply are doing to try to get some comparative analysis over time periods, is we take the total cost of the health plan, and divide it by the number of employees covered over that period of time, and we come out with a neat little unit cost called per employee per month, P-E-P-M. What that does, it allows us to take a large aggregated volume of dollars and break it down to a unit cost, a per employee per month cost, and that allows us to really do comparative analysis over a period of time. Because, hey, volume of dollars is important, a little bit, but we also throw as a school district. So, just to say something's more expensive from a total cost, but we have more, more employees covered, it's more important to break it down to a unit cost. So, on the first row, you'll see in here, as we move across, this is our net claim cost. This is the most important part, because our fixed costs, which are about 10% of our plan, those really don't change over time. We've been paying about that same cost statically over this timeline. That doesn't change. What changes is the cost of claims. That's the area that can become volatile over time. And you can see here, from 2013, we're at $534 per employee per month. We stayed very static in 1415. We stayed very static in 1516. We saw an uptake in 1617. But this past year here, you can see that we took quite a spike in our health care claims cost. And a lot of that is due, if you drop all the way down to that last row on claims greater than $50,000 per employee per month, you can see that really what happened here is we had a large incidence uptick in claimants that were greater than $50,000. We actually increased that area quite a bit. So, at the end of the day, there was, in total, where we increased our costs, we had about four to five million dollars in just that part alone. You can see here that really, at the end of the day, just those claimants alone that were greater than $50,000, it jumped from $157 to $235 per employee per month. So, when you see a spike like this, it's not folks seeing the doctors, it's not folks that are being referred for lab and imaging, it's not being on our prescription drug care plan that is very static. When you see a spike, it's because we're having a large incidence of claims over $50,000. That's where you begin to see the spike. Now, the question begs itself, you can see the static nature of our plan in 1314, 1415, 1516, 1617. Is the five or the 660 on that top row, is that a trend that might begin? Or is it potentially just a one-year phenomenon? And we're beginning to see our plan stabilize again, and we're hoping that phenomena is going to drop. But we're going to see something in a minute that is going to show, is that we have been performing so well as a school district over the last four years, we have been below marketplace. And I think what we're really going to be talking about here is the fact that our health plan is probably beginning to live a little more like what we see in the marketplace, that we're performing so well over the past four years. But the news about this, though, is we're not going to guess at this. We're going to be putting some things in place, and bringing some things to you, that we hope are going to be real, real solutions to helping bend this cost curve. So, with all that being said, I think the takeaway this slide is that, look, for four years, we have been very static. This past plan year, we saw a spike. We looked into the data and realized that claims over $50,000, that's where the spike happened. The question may pose itself, what are we going to do about that? You know, the fact of the matter is that so much of this is working hard, putting in analytics, coming up with solutions. And this school district has won awards, it's a lot of playing over there. We have won TASB awards, we have won wellness awards, we have made changes when they're necessary. But at the end of the day, bad things happen to good people. When you look at these top claims, they're life-threatening claims, that just all of a sudden manifest into very significant life moments, and nobody has figured this out yet. I'll tell you a stat right now that is so consistent with every plan, and that is that only 7% of our population, around 9,000 total, men, women, and children on our plan. This is consistent, if you look at Aleaf, if you look at KDISD, Pasadena, if you look at just the manufacturing that's out there. The trend in the marketplace is that 6% to 7% of our folks are going to do 60% to 70% of the claim causing health. The fact is that the high proportion of the folks, to the tune of 93% of our membership, will just basically not engage the health plan. They will go see doctors, they will get lab and imaging, they will have two, three days in a hospital, they will then progress potentially into getting prescription drugs. If that's really what we have with 93% of our membership in that arena, we would all have 100% health plans without any deductibles, coinsurance, and bill plumping our rates five over half. But the fact of the matter is, in the health care trend that we're seeing across this country with any population, we're starting to see the emergence of 5% to 6% to 7% of membership that is doing a disproportionate share of health care costs, because at this moment in time, the health care industry has not solved the problem of acute trajectory health care costs. We're going to be talking about this in a minute, that we're going to see drugs this year approach over $1 million for specific drug therapy. We're going to see drugs hitting the market for things before that we really didn't do much about in the area of migraines, drugs in the area of genotherapy for cancer. We're going to see drugs in the area of Hep C, which we've seen. We're going to see great cures, we're going to see great therapy, but the cost of the health care industry is going to be sending these drugs to health plans is going to be monumental. I'm not concerned anymore about cancer claims or whatever, although those can be severe, but most cancer now is done outpatient. What's going to ultimately impact our plan is pharmaceutical costs. Because when we start seeing drug therapies approaching a half a million to a billion dollars, I mean, who can argue with it? We're seeing, we're seeing child blindness that is being somewhat eradicated with certain drugs and slowed down. Who could, who could argue with that? When we turn a hemophiliac into somebody who can now play on a playground without worrying about getting a cut and bleeding to death. These are all altruistic, but when we're talking about millions of dollars in this area with a finite budget, that's going to be where we're really facing our future. So, with that being said, again, the good news is four years stacked on this first slide. We saw a spike this past year. We're beginning to stabilize after that spike. We'll be back to you to talk very shortly in the next couple of months about where we're heading to for the next plan year. Just very quickly, again, this is really, on this next slide, this is really just a summary of this slide on an aggregated volume. I just wanted to show you, and Mr. Woods and his team, that this past year, our total plan cost was $51 million. I mean, our small little group here, I mean, it's, it's a big school district group, but when you consider our population is less than 10,000 members, we have less than 6,000 employees on our health plan, and this past year, we're going to spend $51 million. The good news is, those numbers are not near as much as most school districts, but still, when you just, it blows you away when you consider the volume of dollars that a small family plan like we have, made up of all these employees, and all these spouses, and all these children, are in a situation that will pass over $50 million for the first time. So, with all that being said, I wanted to break out some different areas for you. Again, you can see on the RX alone, we spent $10 million, close to $10 million on drugs this year. Again, numbers that are very good, we'll see in a moment, stacked up to our fellow school districts in Houston area, on top of the fact that we win awards with our health plan. Not only do we have the best health plan, and we gauge that by analytics and stats, it's not taught. We can back it up. Our school district has the best health plan out there from a benefit value, our, our cost value still is below marketplace, and we win awards with our wellness programs every year from TASB and other folks who monitor and benchmark us. So, the employees, I think, are also extremely appreciative. I sit with your board, your committees, your wellness committees, your insurance committees, Ida, Michelle, the risk management teams, the feedback, believe me, your folks really appreciate your health plan. It provides great value as we move through it. On the next slide, we'll see in here, I just, again, wanted to bring up a point that we're talking about these is ranked. And you know what's interesting about this slide? And again, this slide is no different than any other slide I see with any other school district. By the way, just to give you just a moment here, my team is strictly a public niche governance team of consultants. Here in Houston, this team that I am so pleased to practice with, we handle Aleaf, we handle Pasadena, the more consolidated KD, HISD, Aldean ISD, just name it for you on top of this great school district. So, we know the school district business. We've just picked up Austin ISD and San Antonio ISD. One of the things we're going to be doing very soon is bringing the first collaborator together at all of our area school districts to talk as teams, to just talk and say, what's going on with our health plans? We've got the analytics, but let's talk it out. We're going to be doing that very soon in Austin over the next two months. So, Aldean ISD just became a client, we're starting to get our hands around their data. So, the good news is, when we talk, and when Gallagher talks, we're going to be able to talk as a collaborative, what is everybody doing? How are we comparing? We're going to see some of that in a minute. But you can see in here, the takeaway of this slide, does anybody see cancer up there? These are specific diagnosis categories of disease states. This is our health plan, and you don't see cancer up there. And that kind of tells you what we were talking about. You know, that sure, we still have cancer on our health plan, but you look at really what our folks are being treated for as primary diagnosis, and we have volume of dollars- for as primary diagnosis, and we have the volume of dollars go, hypertension, epilepsy, you know, diabetes, allergies, Houston, we have a lot of them, we've seen us nut-taking allergies from Harvey still, you know, there's a lot of turbulence, a lot of disruption, and what's going on, we're seeing allergies like we've never seen before. I mean, nonspecific gastritis, folks, we're talking about a leaky stomach here, we're talking about an autoimmune system, our own systems going after toxicity in our own systems. It's autoimmune stuff, and it's from diets and stress, and what we eat, and what we take, and what we put on our body. That's an area that we hadn't seen before, but we're starting to see big time stomach issues going on, and it affects the whole body, that's the engine. But you can go down here and see the rest of these. So again, these are things that we're trying to attack early through wellness programs, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but at the end of the day, these things are getting on with it, and they're becoming, as we age, as the population, more and more impactful to our health plan. This is something that I really wanted to show you all, because this slide kind of tells the story of where we are. Where you'll see Aleaf in the fourth column, these other five columns that you'll see are representative of school districts in the Houston area, we just redacted the information, okay? But at the end of the day, these are your fellow peers in the Houston area. Now, when we go back to the medical and RX plan spin, you can see here in the top blue column there, you can see when you go all the way across, there's that six hundred and sixty dollar P E P M number that we showed on the first slide, that's our total cost of our health plan in our RX plan divided by the number of employees covered. Now, the thing that's interesting is, go to the next column and you'll see the act of benefit value, this is where it's very important, and we just don't measure numbers. So our plan is running six hundred and sixty dollars P E P M, okay? Now, let's look at District number three. You can see that they've been running, and I used their last plan here, five ninety-three, and their current plan they're running at five seventy-one, and somebody would say, well, it's six sixty, we're running hotter, we're more expensive on a P E P M than District number three, right? That's what he would say. But we bore down in analytics, because what we have to look at is, let's look at the plan comparability. Our plan, when you come down, you see the eighty-eight percent, that's our act of value. That is what, under the Affordable Care Act, we now have to rate and rate our plans based on the efficiency of how we pay claims and how rich our plan design is. And what this simply means here is that every dollar that goes through a claim system, the district is picking up eighty-eight cents of every dollar. That means our employees, through deductibles, coinsurance, and other things, pick up twelve percent. That eighty-eight percent value, when you also take into consideration that we have a free clinic to our employees, which is incredibly good, the only ones that have a free clinic in this area is HISD, that's it. Pasadena ISD has, we're not on the east, but at the end of the day, if you add our free clinic, we're probably getting closer to ninety percent of every dollar this district picks up, so our employees don't have to, and our plan members. That folks in the act of world today, the Affordable Care Act is a platinum plan that we continue to provide. That's the highest plan you can have. Gold is in the eightieth percentile. When we get close to the ninetieth, we're talking about a platinum plan. When you go to District three, even though they were running a little, at five ninety-three or five seventy-one, we were at six sixty, they only have a seventy-five percent plan, which is a silver plan. So what we do is we modify our plan, if we have that kind of a plan design, our number would go to five seventy-five, you see the red? So what I did is I took everybody's numbers across and then modified it, because our plan at eighty-eight percent is so much richer. If we wanted to have a seventy-five percent plan to match that school district, our number would be five seventy-five, and I don't believe that's been our goal, our goal is to be the best health plan, and we're going to be talking about that in a minute. So as you move through this, even with our platinum plan, District five is just barely under us, but again, with their seventy-five percent plan, we're at five seventy-five, we're beating District five, we're beating District three at seventy-five percent if we chose to have that kind of plan. Right across the board, even with modifying, it's seven forty, District two, we're at six sixty, so we're beating them without modifiers, and District one, we're beating them also, and they have a seventy-nine percent plan. So you can see here across the board that the takeaway of this is that even with our nine percent plan or eighty-eight percent plan, we're beating most of the school districts who have a lesser in the seventy percent plan design, but the only ones that are beating our number, if we modified our benefit plan to meet theirs, we would be beating them on numbers. So again, the takeaway is, we're keeping this very cost-effective and providing a close to a platinum plan, and that speaks well for our workforce here. So again, good news on that. One last thing, and we're just about finished, is this, that every year, the board, I think it's important, because you talk to your peer groups in the area, you go to your conferences, you're starting to hear a lot of noise about TRS Act of Care, which is the state plan. This district as well, now there's about twenty-five of us left in the state of Texas who have chosen to stay out of TRS Act of Care. Every time I had a chance to talk to y'all, I commend this board for making that tough decision when it could have been very easy a few years ago to jump into the TRS state pool when everybody else was doing it. And the reason I show this slide is because this is what our plan would look like today if we had surrendered, and if you didn't have an incredible staff who deals with the stress every year of doing this and saying, we're going to hang in and keep control of our health plan. There are countless other school districts right now, and we have about eleven hundred and seventy school districts in the state of Texas, all the twenty-five are left out of it. The others are knocking on the door wanting to get out and gain control of their plan again, but they can't by the law, they can't get out. So we're one of twenty-five to twenty-eight who continues to beat the numbers, and what this will tell you is here in our first column, our plan, we've seen this number already on a couple of slides, this past year spent fifty-one million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars total cost on our health plan. From that standpoint, if we were in TRS Act of Care at that same timeline this past year, we would have spent sixty-five billion dollars, and we would have had a silver seventy percent plan instead of close to a platinum plan. That's what would have happened to our health plan. So by us fighting for our plan, for you all allowing us to do our work, and to just have faith that we're doing things, trying to bend cost curves, which we are, this plan is so much better for our employees and their family members than what we could buy at the state level to the tune of almost thirteen to fourteen billion dollars. And the other news is, I've compared it to a plan that's one of their richest plans, that we couldn't even get into it anymore because they closed it because the claim costs were too high. So with all that being said, the takeaway is, four-year static, this past year spike, I got it. We talked about ninety-three percent of our folks that are really toe in the line, we do have a seven percent group that is out there using the health plan like most other plans, but even with that being said, we're still comparative with other school districts to the best, and we're also beating TRS Act of Care across the board.
Bob, if I could, if we could jump to, to strategies and kind of give you an idea of where we're going. We asked Bob to, this was the year that our TPA, our third-party administrator contract was up with that in it, and so it's time to go out to bid, so we're, we're out to bid right now, and we're getting responses from all the big players, and so that's soon to be brought back to you guys. That's the administration of the data, they're not, they're not paying any of the claims with their money, we're not buying a funded healthcare plan, they're just taking our money and applying the rules of our plan to pay the claims and process the claims. At the same time, you know, Bob and other districts have started looking at some other options of, of ways of designing plans to have alternatives for those who don't necessarily fully utilize that eighty-eight percent plan. And so you want to kind of describe what that accountable care organization option might be? We're just looking into these strategies.
Sure, thank you very much. Right now, we have very expansive networks where our employees can pretty much go wherever they want to within the end of the system, which is a great network, and right with so. With that though, becomes a contractual marketplace that since, pretty much we're saying, if you can live within certain guidelines, we'll put you in the network. There's still a lot of price differentials even within the end of the network, with Memorial, Herman, Methodist, wherever we go. So what the insurance carriers, and we call them BUCAs, Blue Cross United Healthcare Signet, and BUCA is the acronym, and those are the big four that are left, what they're beginning to now look at is taking analytics inside this broad network with all these hospitals and all these doctors. For years now, they've been measuring outcomes, we were talking about outcomes, perfect timing for tonight, we're talking about outcome-based. What they're doing now is talking and looking at hospital systems and doctors who are doing things more efficiently. And they're beginning to say, you know what, why is everybody in the same network? If somebody's got a better outcome, why aren't they being showcased differently? So what we're beginning to see is, we have these big healthcare systems in Houston, you've got Memorial, you've got Methodist, our employees use them, you've got HCA right here with West Community, but HCA across the board, then you have St. Luke's CHI. So with all that being said, then you've got your niches like MD Anderson, Texas Children's and Women's Hospital. But for the most intents and purposes, these carriers now are coming to us and saying, this slice of the healthcare system is doing even better, and they're more accountable, and they're putting themselves at risk from the standpoint of how they fund, willing to guarantee outcomes. So what we're going to begin to see is a trend starting now with this RP moving forward is potentially an option, not a total replacement. We're here tonight to say that the employees, if they want it all, don't tell me where I have to go, that kind of plan will continue. But we're going to begin to say, you know what, if hospital-wide is coming to the table with a system plan, an accountable care organization, kind of like the HMO, and it's just going to be one hospital system, then the employees can make that decision? I'm willing to pay less, but I won't be able to use the expansive network, but you know what, I already use this healthcare system. So we're going to be seeing these carriers coming at us with choices, we have two plans now. We might have a third plan in there, and it might be specific to a healthcare system. It might be a couple of healthcare systems. Just recently, Altona ISD, we restructured their plan, we let the three major hospital systems compete. We now have a Memorial Healthcare Plan, a Methodist Plan, and a St. Luke's CHI Kelsey Plan. And then we also have a plan where if anybody wants to go wherever they want to, that's fine, we'll just pay a little more. So be looking for that as we begin to look at the analytics, and the key to that is if we can keep our benefits the same and not do deductibles and coinsurance like a lot of employers do, but make a smarter health plan, and therefore keeping our, look, we haven't had benefit changes with any magnitude in seven or eight years because our folks have been doing the right thing. They've been using wellness, they've been in the HMOs, let's keep bringing it, because we have a smart group, and they like to see things that are working without us changing deductibles and coinsurance and other topics. So stay tuned on that, the RFPs are in, the responses, we're going through the analysis right now, and we'll be back soon to talk about things that we're up to as far as new solutions and take us over the next four to five years. So other than that, that's pretty much where we are, and stay tuned, so, Mr. Woods. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, one for Charles probably, what's our Scott loss limit?
Two and say five thousand.
What is that, per participant? Okay, and District five, what is that?
Aggregate.
It's generally about twenty-five percent margin on top of expected claims, so I would figure fifty-one million just off my head, it's probably another ten billion of aggregate liability, he has the umbrella up there, it's usually about twenty to twenty-five percent marginal over expected cost.
Okay, because we were, we're roughly, this may be at the center, should we be already at fifty-one million as a cost of a plan yet, or any?
So the Scott loss would be applied on those claims that, that are spiteless, yeah, not the total cost of the plan.
And this is, I'm wondering what the downstream effects of our plans and Aleaf are, based on the Affordable Care pullbacks and changes in the Affordable Care Act? Because Texas doesn't participate in expanded Medicaid, that's going to increase downstream the cost for our insurance because they're going to have to spread that loss around somewhere when they're not getting paid for the medical care that people who don't have insurance have, and that's a rhetorical.
So that one, that one we're trying to fight by creating these extra plans of options of affordable care organizations, because what we're finding already is that the big chains are raising their prices like last year, and, and we have no teeth to make them stop. We have no competition, we have, we're trying to create a competition with our, within our own pool to make them sharpen the pencil, because right now, they don't have to. They're all part of the network.
And how is the, I heard you say that the prescription costs are like twenty-five percent of the expenses?
Right, you can see the numbers. Yeah, and that's normal today.
It is, but when you listen to the news and you're hearing that, okay, a bottle of insulin now costs three hundred and something dollars, still same formula as it was when it was eight, five dollars a bottle, what, fifty years ago? EpiPens, other designer drugs that cost so much, is that part of the reason we have so much more invested in the prescription?
Absolutely, so, so part of the Affordable Care Act, but. Part of the Affordable Care Act was good, but it was also bad, okay? So the drug manufacturers got built into the law, the ability to carve out classes of drugs, and once a drug manufacturer gets that one drug in their class, and they've charged a hundred thousand dollars per treatment, which there are some, they're the only one in that class, every plan has to, has to carry it, so you can't say no. So what happens is, they design these, these designer drugs, which are one-off genetic.
And it's what is not part of the designer drug.
No, so right now, the big, is the big one is, there's hepatitis strains that can be solved by different types of drugs, and so they break it off as this gene type causes this type of hepatitis, so they carve out their own little niche of one drug, and then they get charged whatever they want, and every healthcare claim has to pay it.
So that definitely.
That's got to be repealed somehow at the federal level.
And my response to that is, vote. But, because we can help with that, so.
And now, we just heard another one today that just is, was announced, New York Times, it's twenty-two thousand dollars for one course treatment of post-menopause depression.
That's enough, sir.
That's probably a little bit.
Yeah. I was trying to, that's enough to answer.
We're doing, just, just to let you know, one of the things that we did was very, very, to me, it's going to be transformative, Gallagher developed a collaborative with large school districts this year in Houston area, pooled together under one vendor to leverage the cost of prescription drugs. So we joined the Texas Education Collaborative in plan year seventeen, eighteen, it's stabilizing our prescription costs, and we're now bundling everybody together to leverage pricing against these prescription benefit managers. So believe me, if this is out there, we're finding it here, and we're now getting all of our districts to help come together to leverage costs, and that's really what we're all about right now, is using the other districts to come together, not as one, just for a marketplace, but everybody can keep their own plan and do what they do, but we're getting leveraging the dollars. This is just the beginning, just the RX collaborative that helped bring our costs down.
I miss a post-part. Probably still worth it, right?
Mr. Morey now, Mr. Morey now, a couple of questions and comments, and it's a great presentation, I like it, you know, we've balanced every day, thinking outside the box, not doing it the same way, doing it in the collaborative, in the, in the groups, and to save that money, it's, it's a whole new, I'm a paramedic, and I haven't heard that part as a, as part of the healthcare, we do a lot where our work happens, St. Luke's CHI and stuff, and everybody's under stress during that, but to see that, thinking outside the ways to potentially save money for the district, save money for the, for the boys, staff and boys, but still give them the same amount of care that they're used to getting and so forth, so, great, great presentation. Only question I have is regards to, are you available for video? Because I know this is an issue that we've been talking about in the human resources of just, just brainstorming kind of thing about, hearing you present, we have a lot of brand-new teachers, brand-new young teachers, twenty-two years old coming out, and they look at the bottom line, I know HR has this issue, they look at the bottom line, I'm going to try and get him paid. They don't care about their healthcare, they don't look at the retirement, they look at all that. But the way you presented it is very straightforward, explaining to do this. I know you have partnerships with other districts neighboring, I like the fact that the districts, and they'll go out and research their other districts and find out what they're doing, you pick up, look at it and show. You pick up, look at it and show, this is why you got to come to A.L. You know, this is, this is a big selling point. So I don't know, this is a thought to use him in part of your marketing ways for recruiting, you know, and do that. So I think it's a party, especially for what the RFP, I think it's a great add-in. You know, just to throw that in there.
That may be, that may be asking a lot of, because he's actually a consultant for all the districts in, you know, this side of Houston, so I don't know.
That would be nice, but no.
Whatever savings we could gather, we have to pay off.
Or, or something up there, or, or you can set up a something. I mean, I just think the script, it wasn't a script. You're just talking, is this what you've done for all your life? You know, you can, you can, you know, show somebody and do that thing. This is the information, what I'm saying, is the information that the new staff needs to hear and we can get some quality to do that. Last question I have is, and this is my question every year. I see obesity is a big group, a number in there. And I still get emails from time to time and frustrated, you know, occasionally, teachers, staff about bariatric thing. And I know the cost has always been a cost issue. So I don't know with this way that new bundling is with St. Luke's or Methodist and, and Herman. If, if there's any of those that are having, you know, discounted rates or discounted ways to really get these. Because we have, we have a lot of staff that are battling with that, with diabetes and other illnesses and, you know, I would probably, I would think probably one in each campus, you know. There's one on the board that I don't understand. I don't talk about myself, so.
So, so the last we looked at, which was this last year on my committee, Bob and Edna brought some pricing from across the industry about after-effects. And so there is not just the surgery, because a lot of them actually cause other problems in the overall body system of, that are longer term. And so have to be dealt with, with post-surgery surgeries and treatments.
So if you're looking at rates and doing this, I don't know if it'd be pre-existing and all that with how that would work, but, you know, just, just to go back to the drug...
We'll review it again.
If there was a way to, to, to do that.
We'll bring it back to the committee again this year.
Thank you so very much, great presentation. The only thing that I'm upset about is I didn't hear Cadillac plan. The word Cadillac. I heard silver, I heard silver, like everyone's getting older, I didn't hear Cadillac.
Even as, as wonderful and full our plan is, we always project that on the out-years and we're still, well, we are far away from the Cadillac text. And I firmly believe Congress is probably going to bipartisan to do away with that. Because if we want to have a really good health plan, we ought to be able to do it.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you for waiting and...
Not at all, I'm here served, though.
Thank you. All right, Board. We are at item number, thank you so much, Ms. Patty here, please. Thank you. We're at the point of listening to a considered approval, one-way dual-language and bilingual program. And Ms. Patty, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I see this presentation. Okay, so you have a condensed version of this, right? Okay, because I think the Board is, and I'm, I'm just saying, Board, we looked at this information at the Board Retreat and had opportunities. And I'm going to always remind, when we have this information sent to us, you have opportunities to ask questions, please do so.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that absolutely this is something that we did share with the Board at the Board Retreat. And so we did, for the purposes, because it is a program model change, we did want to bring it to a Board meeting. Patty, our Director of Second Language Education, review this.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, it's President Chambers, Board of Trustees, and good guys, thank you for being here. I am here to give a condensed version, as this one everybody talked about, of our previous presentation that we had on March 2nd during the Board Retreat. I just wanted to give an overview of what we talked about. And again, another opportunity for questions, should there be any. So right now, we have a very traditional transitional early exit model. And I stand before you to advocate for our students in this district to have the Cadillac of bilingual models, which is dual-language. And so I wanted to first start off by just informing everyone that we do have 10,000 bilingual students in A.L. ISD in grades pre-K through sixth grade. So by law, we are required to have a program that is specific to their needs. Very much like special education, 504, there is particular requirement that a school district is required to provide to meet the needs of those students. The same thing happens in the bilingual world, the ESL world. So here, I just wanted to give you a glimpse into what does that language actually look like. And I just wanted you to see it, that it is the policy of the state that every student in the state who has a primary language other than English and who is identified as an English learner shall be provided a full opportunity to participate in a bilingual education program or ESL. So that's where I'm coming from, that's the context of this request. And with that being said, the state does have structures in place. You can't just come up with a program that you believe is right. It has to be research-based. So there's four different program models that a school district can elect to implement. And so right now, what we have in place is what's called an early exit model. And then we have in the past had a late exit model. And right now, we also happen to have dual-language one-way at three pilot campuses on the east side of the district. And then we have dual-language immersion two-way at 11 elementary campuses, three intermediate and a middle school. So we have now experience, we have data, we have stories to tell and lessons learned from all the models that you see here today. So based on that background, I'd like to go a little bit deeper into why we're requesting this change. So right now, if you take a look at the goal of our current model, the early exit, you'll see it's very simple. It's one statement, to use the primary language as a resource while acquiring full proficiency in English. That's our charge right now. That's what we're supposed to do. Traditional programs, that's what they want you to do. But as you know, the world is evolving, and people realize the value of being multilingual and just that impact on your marketability and your impact on the workforce. So the state has this other option that school districts are, can entertain. And I want you to look at how much different the definition reads and the goal of the program. So you see there at the very top, it's a bilingual, bi-literacy program. That was not featured in previous models. And then the goal is no longer just a statement, now you have a full-blown rich paragraph. So attain full proficiency in another language as well as English. This model provides ongoing instruction and literacy and academic content in the student's primary language, which in this case would be Spanish, as well as English, with at least half of the instruction delivered in the student's primary language for the duration of the program. There's something that people must commit to, it's something we must monitor. And that's why we have to submit a state report every November to ensure that we're tracking, we're monitoring, we're measuring, and we're providing that information to the state. Again, talking about those four models that you saw on the previous slide. If you want to see, well, how do those rank? What's better, what, what's good and what's the best? You will see at the very top, dual-language is the Cadillac, dual-language is the best. You're able to see that the longer the children are in the program, the more successful they're going to be over time. So you know, we already see, or have seen that data. You saw that at the October Board Workshop where we shared that data, third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade with you. By sub-pop, Miss Brode, just as you requested. By content areas, and no matter how you sliced it, we were able to see that dual-language students, no matter what they're raised, what their grade, what content area, they have the highest percentage in the masters category, if you look at the AMM averages, so, thank you. So here's a graphic that we just wanted to simplify some of that TEA verbiage and just let you know that, again, there's four models. And two are subtracted. Those are the old-fashioned models, the early exit, the late exit, because again, the focal point is only on the English development. And over time, if you don't nurture and support and build the Spanish, it dwindles away. You may be able to have that social conversation, raise your hand, Mr. Moreno, is that you? You're a victim of that situation?
Yes, I, I, I guess I'm making it public, because I was, I'm an affected as, as a child. You know, spoke Spanish when I was a young, young child, and they took it away from me. And then in eighth grade, they say, you need a foreign language. And so it didn't really make a whole lot of sense, so it made me actually lose it, so. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Another victim is my husband. Same thing, you look at his Spanish face, he doesn't have that language, and just, how cheated. You know, just what a disadvantage that is. So we're trying to correct that with this next generation. And so our students are very much recruited into dual-language to make sure that they have an opportunity to continue to build that language that they learned as infants, and they continue progressing long-term. So going back to the slide here on the graphic, the green represents the additive model. So that's where we equip our teachers with the proper training and skillset and research and techniques to be able to implement dual-language, whether it be a one-way model or a two-way, but to do it effectively to where you're growing both languages. So the academic language in both English and Spanish. So that's what we're shooting for, that's the data that you have already seen. We met that Saturday at the Board Retreat, I showed you the data of our pilot campuses, so on those areas of the, of the district where we don't have English speakers and there are only Spanish speakers there. And you compare how the, the dual students are performing compared to the early exit students, it was significant double-digit discrepancies there across, again, all content areas and the grade levels that were featured. So again, our stats are very, very consistent. Our current framework looks like this, as you can see, it's very heavy on the English. You only have the Spanish, you have the required grade level. So as you know, we have to educate our children in Spanish when they're in pre-K. That's one of the factors that allows them to qualify for pre-K. So I think we have to provide that, that instruction. They're learning language for the first time, going into kindergarten, learning to read. So of course, all of that has to happen in their primary language. And just like Mr. Moreno said, once they have that, we're taking it away very abruptly, and it's reversing them in the English, and it's detrimental. So we want to change it to what our two-way dual program looks like, which again, has been extremely successful in the 10 years it's been implemented. And you'll see it's a more balanced approach, we call it the 50/50 model. And when you saw the definition, you saw how the state said that it was required that students have the duration of the program and that the other language be practiced at least half, at least half. So here you see the half. So you see that this is again, a replica of what we already do with two-way dual. So now we can just bring on more teachers or more students to continue this process that we already know works. In terms of our phased implants, should you approve this change in model? We want to be very conservative. We want to make sure that principals have an opportunity to be educated, to get the information, because again, not all principals have dual-language at their current campus. So we want to make sure that we give them an opportunity to learn, that their I L T members have an opportunity to ask questions and really get deep into the weeds before it goes to teachers. And so we also want our teachers to feel comfortable for them to have bilingual process. So this is our most conservative plan, which would start with our pre-K and kindergarten teachers this summer. We already have designed a PD that we expect them to participate in. And we would continue that with follow-up sessions throughout the school year and extend their learning in year two and in year three. I will go ahead and just put this little disclaimer here, because I'm looking at a very effective principal that's sitting in the back. If the school already has a dual-language, they have the infrastructure to potentially go faster, be more accelerated in their implementation. So, so long as they are faithful to our dual-language framework and that we're partners in this transition and the implementation, and as we monitor, things are on the up and up, then we're going to support them in that effort. The key to all those models that we saw is fidelity. And so unless we have that, none of the program models are going to work. So we're confident that what we've seen with two-way dual, the respect, the communication, the collaboration we have had with all those teachers and administrators over the years, that has directly contributed to why it's so successful across all those campuses and grades. Here's just a sample, I don't expect for you to be able to see that, but we were looking at it during the retreat. But this gives you an example of what type of PD sessions we're expecting, we're going to be inviting the teachers to attend. So the first row is all the pre-K training, year one, year two, year three. Kindergarten teachers, year one, year two, year three, first grade, second grade. So again, that phase of the process and for them to go upfront, all the levels of support they're going to be receiving. So the benefits to making this change, okay, to switching to dual-language would be the no-screeners. So now we don't need a parent to come to an informational meeting. They don't have to fill out an application. They don't have to do all those different things. Now it's going to be an automatic for their child. So if mom has to ride metro to come to school, or she's working jobs and having a childcare, we are taking those obstacles away. We're automatically going to have this as an opportunity for their children. So no screeners. Transportation, so now that all the bilingual campuses will have this, then children will have to be shuttled from one building to another that's offering this or offering that. All the bilingual campuses will have this as their, to use your words, default, like their program. Staffing, this is exciting. So the state does allow to partner a bilingual teacher with an ESL teacher. Whereas with traditional bilingual, you have to have two bilingual teachers partnered together to deliver all of the content areas. But with dual, you're able to have the Spanish-speaking teachers deliver the Spanish instruction for the Spanish content areas, and the ESL teacher can deliver the other half of the instruction, the English subjects. So that's a strong partnership, and it's a big, big relief to our efforts to recruit bilingual teachers, knowing that there is a shortage across this community, the entire state. So being able to partner bilingual ESL education professionals together is definitely a help to all districts. And then planning. Right now, the way that we have two-way dual is that there's only one or two teachers per grade level, which is very hard for them to collaborate and seek ideas. So in this process, we would have multiple teachers at each grade level that now would be able to be a true cohort, a true PLC. That we would plan together, visit one of those classrooms, gain insight, ask questions. So it would definitely increase the amount of teacher collaboration, which is always a good thing. And then we realized that our I L T specialists, they have a lot on their plates, there's a lot that they do to support teachers. And so if we have a whole long list of programs that they have to be experts in, that's quite challenging. So if we can take something off their plates, it's extremely appreciated. So instead of having to support early exit and ESL and two-way and one-way and newcomer program and ELD intervention, at least there's one thing they're not going to have to, to review and monitor and support. So we can take the early exit off of that particular list. And then what's also very exciting, and Mr. Chambers can speak more to this, but there's a lot of conversation at the state level about changing student wait. So the fact that the state is actually looking at potentially increasing funding and support of this type of a program speaks volumes. I'm not saying we're going to get it, but the conversations themselves are so enriching and just so valuable. And it shows that the state realizes that a bilingual workforce is marketable and makes the whole state's economy stronger. And so I'm crossing my fingers, that's something that moves forward. And of course, the most important thing is student learning. We're going to have a picture-based of bilingual, bi-literate students. They're going to contribute in a positive way to our future workforce. All of the, of these items that I've spoken to actually align to your commitments and your core beliefs. So we talked about quality K through two, starting this type of a program early, again, pre-K, all the way through will allow them to have strong foundation in their Spanish, which is a good thing, because all of those connections will start to happen in English faster, stronger, all the way through into those intermediate grades. So that K through two focus is absolutely essential. But the next one about quality programs of choice. The more one-way dual-language classes we have, the more opportunity potentially having a two-way partner. So it's a good thing. So we're hoping that, I'm thinking, just putting a name out there. If Hicks Elementary can be able to sell the program, support us in those efforts, and get a class, strong base of English-speaking students, then they don't just have to do one way, they can do two ways as well. So those are other conversations that some principals are willing to have. They're, for the first time, looking at that, again, to market their buildings, because dual-language is something that the charters don't have. And so if they can go ahead and do that in their, in their schools, it's definitely a plus in maintaining our enrollment and potentially increasing it. And then last but not least, when we talk about making sure that our students are college and career-ready, how much more ready can you be than being bilingual, bi-literate, bi-cultural, having that respect for other people's thoughts and ideas? And again, they say that those bilingual learners, their cognitive abilities are much stronger compared to a bilingual learner. So with all of that, the request is that we recommend the A.L. ISD U, Board of Trustees, approve one-way dual language as the district's bilingual program model.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu. Before we move to the motion, I would like to have one discussion. Yes, I have workers that have been taking notes here like that, ask questions. Let me start with Ms. Butler, let me work my way down. Thank you, Ms. Butler.
So thank you, Ms. Cantu, for the presentation. One of the things that I was excited about was looking at this data and seeing how the students actually are outperforming. So I just want to be clear, we're going to not have bilingual in this traditional setting. And we're going to go for dual-way, so that kids are doing dual-language, so that kids are doing both, correct? Full-time, no matter what, content, whatever. They're going to all learn and have exposure to both languages every day, constantly.
Absolutely, correct, yes. Yes. Pre-K through sixth grade. And that's the training piece for campuses, for parents, for them to understand that this is a long-term process. You don't learn two languages overnight. The research is very clear, it takes five to seven years to truly become proficient in another language, which is why the state's definitions are sort of clear and say, the duration of the program. So yes, Ms. Butler, it would go long-term, and right now, our dual language, the makeup that we have, the 50-50 model goes all the way to the end of sixth grade.
And so we have it at these 18 campuses, correct?
We have bilingual, and we have 18 bilingual campuses.
And so those 18 are going to become dual language?
Yes, they're going to, instead of having early exit, they will have one-way dual language as their program, bilingual program model.
And so how about the other campuses? Is there going to be a, like in 2022, that maybe it's district-wide, we're talking about changing it, are we looking at it?
Are you talking about the ESL-only campuses, the six that we have?
Yes.
They don't have bilingual students zone to those campuses, they don't have bilingual teachers. So that, that's not something I can speak to at this moment, I don't know what the future holds, but for right now, that would not be something that they would be able to support. They don't have, you have to have bilingual students to have dual language. You have to have them on.
I just have a question on that, just to make it very clear, that is, the bilingual students is not the entire campus that's going to be dual language?
Right.
So I want to make sure it's just the bilingual students that we would be providing services to already? If you're going, it's going to be those students are going to be dual language? So the English-speaking students are not going to be dual language?
But they can be.
But they can be if they're in that program.
Yes. Parents, yes, exactly right. So the potential is definitely there for English-speaking students to continue participating. But that's something that is unpredictable. So if we only have four, if we're interested parents, that doesn't make a class. But like at the Leesmans and the Hortons, we have waiting lists of English-speaking parents that want to be in the program. That's what we want across all these buildings. We could, if we had that type of interest, we could have it at 18 campuses. That would be the dream.
But that's not this presentation?
No, this presentation is to just let you know that just the program model.
Let's be very clear. You received an email, some of the board members received an email, and I forward that over to the administration, that's nothing contract. But some of those questions, I'll leave, the question on that, so.
I was just going to say that Ms. Montgomery sent the board an email today, just in case you haven't seen that, with a response to the Patty address. But yeah, I want to be clear for people that use social media, that this is not a district-wide dual-language program. It might be in the future, but for right now, it's for dual language, it's for bilingual students who are receiving bilingual services. One-way, we're getting ready to change that to dual-language, one-way dual.
It's currently early exit, and we want to change it to one-way dual language.
I think the best part of the presentation, too, Ms. Kent, was when you opened up and showed what the law requires for our bilingual students. So this is not a new program or a change to the program that we've approved as dual language. This is, this is the answer to the call that's going on with our bilingual students currently.
Yes, thank you.
And I, I think, oh, sorry.
Before you go, Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Then I'm going to go back to Ms. Key, please.
Okay. The question I asked at the workshop, too, and I'm going to ask it again, is the model is not substantially different from the early exit and grades pre-K through two?
Correct.
So are those campuses that want to go ahead and have the staffing and the knowledge of how to operate dual language, want to be allowed to start at pre-K through two instead of?
Just pre-K and K?
Yeah.
And the answer is, it depends on their level of commitment and fidelity to the program. We're going to give you an example. There's already a campus that has come forward, and they're wanting to change which content is delivered in which language. Those are the types of things that are dangerous. We cannot have that type of flexibility.
Well, you also said that fidelity is critical.
Critical.
I agree with that. And if we don't get that fidelity, it's not going to, we're not going to see the same success.
And that will impact PD, and there's just resources.
And you'll have a good team that will assess if they're ready for that.
Yes.
But that is a company that they can.
Yes, it's something that we will, after we review their current infrastructure and what their ideas are, we've already had one meeting at one campus, it was very successful, brainstorming, talking about their current staffing. And again, it's about whether or not your teachers are ready. So you're right, a very minimal change, but if a first-grade teacher is panicking, or the whole team is panicking, I would recommend we're going to hold off. Watch pre-K and K come on board, ease that anxiety, and we might have to go a little slower or to go faster later. So we have to have a good pulse on how those teachers feel about it. And so I make that recommendation as well to the administrators. But the option is there, if the commitment is there to do it right.
And then that, so I asked this question also, and you answered it, but I want to hear it again, is non-Spanish speakers who can't go to a two-way dual language program with a parent request, that they need enrolled in a one-way dual classroom, that's going to still be allowed?
Ending space.
Ending space.
Yes, because, yes, the priority has to go to the Spanish-speaking student by one.
And I'd like that both groups are going to get to hear the language model by native speakers, so they can develop, you know, kids that young will not have an American accent on their Spanish speaking.
Yes.
So I think that's awesome.
True models, authentic models of language.
And the other question is, students who, because we've talked about mobility before, can students who move from one campus to another, let's say they move from a one-way dual-language campus, and they go to a two-way dual-language campus, is that going to be an easy transition for them if they choose and if there's space to be in that two-way dual-language classroom?
It depends on what grade, Ms. Key. So for instance, if they're in kindergarten, they have to have the entire literacy block in their native language. But if they're in second grade, the 50-50 has already kicked in. So it's much easier to get them in, it doesn't matter what campus, if that 50-50 piece is already implemented. But if you're younger than that, we have to be very careful and very precise.
And do all of the two-way, two-way dual-language campuses have bilingual students on their campus, so that one-way would be available to them still?
Yes, all, so all the 11 are on bilingual campuses. Yes, have to, to have the bilingual students. Without those bilingual kids, you can't have any type of program. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, obviously, you actually answered, you actually answered it, but I just wanted to say that, thank you for the clarification, because I think there was misinformation that there were a subset of students who would no longer be receiving bilingual or, not bilingual, but dual-language classes. And so thank you for being very clear that.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that.
So when coming, I have, I'm very pleased when we had our retreat to, to understand the beginning of this, is that the reason that we were doing the dual language and the one-way was because the parents didn't fill out, check that box to request to go into the dual language to do this. And now with this going, this is the, this is the streamlined, and it's just going to go straight in there, regardless if they fill out, do that box or not, it's going to be best, in my opinion, for the.
Would they agree with you, Ms. Butler? Would they agree?
Can I go back to campus now?
So let me, let me add a few items, I would just, and these are just comments, because I said it from the very beginning, I think, I do have a great understanding of what's required for our bilingual students. I do. I have great understanding from the policy and from the law. One of the things that came to my mind was, we've had this conversation about changing things with a broad brush. So I'm kind of concerned about that, because we're, you know, kind of taking it to a different extreme. And I can understand when you have four different options, it could be quite confusing. I'm very pleased at the information that we received on the data that's come back. So I'm just going to leave these statements, because otherwise, if I don't say it publicly, people will never know that I had those thoughts. The other thing that I was concerned with is, yes, it's automatic, and so you don't have to go through the process, but I've worked with parents who prefer not to even have that particular thing connected to them. So there have been some parents who won't check the box, because even though you know that the program would be sufficient for them, they don't want that. They believe that that's a stigma to their students, to their child. So just make that very clear, right? Okay. The other thing that I was concerned about was that we are doing this at those elementary levels. What's happening with our entry-exit for our middle-school students?
There's no bilingual education at middle school, and so really, dual language is the only bit of, of, of language development that you see at the secondary level. So right now, Albright is the only one that has like Spanish III pre-AP in for seventh graders, Spanish IV AP for their dual-language students who are currently in eighth grade. Other than that, I mean, you're just going to see typical Spanish I courses, courses for native speakers, just very basic, basic courses.
Are we still supporting our students? I think we had a program where if we had a high schooler who would come in and Spanish-speaking only, what programs do we have in place to support them?
So if you're thinking about the languages too for newcomers, for LINK, so depending on where they stand, Ms. Key, you also have a wealth of knowledge on this, depending on where they are, so if they're really strong in their language, that transfer is going to happen relatively quickly. So some kids don't even need to go to LINK. I mean, they really can go ahead and go through ESL classes at the high school level. But for those children that do have interruptions in their learning, or for whatever reason, need more support, we do have the languages too for newcomers, and it is sheltered instruction teachers, small class size, varying trends in instruction, language and content, to prepare them for their transition to main campus. So they get to be there for no more than two years.
So LINK still, still exists?
At the end, yes.
And supports those students?
Close to 200 students there, I guess.
Okay, all right. So there, to your knowledge, I would think over time, no, that program should always be there for students who are coming into the district who need that particular support.
Yes, it's not just Spanish speakers, we pick everyone all over the world.
Okay. Any, any other conversation?
I do have one question. I don't know if you covered this in the presentation, but neighboring districts, HIC, Ford Bay, and Katie, and so forth, students that come in from there, what programs are they, I can't remember if you gave us a comparison of if they're doing the dual language or they're doing, I don't know, one-way language with early exit? So we get those students transferred in?
Yes, we do.
Today, kindergarten, first year.
Yes, yes.
How's that going to?
So we, we already do that. So we look at their report cards very carefully to see, and it'll say dual language, but that doesn't necessarily mean it looks like our model. So we do science associations in Spanish, they might not, maybe they're doing their math in Spanish. So we have to be very careful before we ever place a student, to make sure that we're continuing their language, their instruction based on the language of the previous district. So if it matches, great, they go straight into our dual program at whatever campus. If it doesn't match, that's what we talk to the parent about, what do you believe would be in their best interest? Should we do a bilingual? Should we do ESL-only? Those conversations happen very organically, after we have documentation from the school.
I don't remember.
And I actually wanted to address that with Ms. Williams, what you mentioned about the potential family, the baby, we have failed to convince them and show them the value of dual language. And if they want to opt out, just like with any of our programs, there is a waiver, a denial. And the state requires us to sit down and conference with parents to ensure they understand the benefits of this program, and that if you choose not to accept it, you must sign off. And now they're a regular, in a regular bilingual class with zero language support. So that's what ends up happening in those cases.
So that will, that will exist on this automatic model?
Yes, yeah, regular class. The only thing that does cause us some concerns is, parents don't understand, then why is my child taking telepass? That's the state requirement, because your child is still considered an English learner. He has to take that. And they try to get them out, but we let them know that's not our call.
Absolutely.
And that's the only little hiccup that we encounter.
We love telepasses.
Yeah.
Do we know how many readers we have in this district?
I have 150. When I looked at last year's PBMAS report, and that was grades three on out, three through eighth grade. That's the one number that sticks out right now, Ms. Key. But if you were to ask me pre-K through 12, I do not have that number in my head, I could certainly pull that for you.
How many bilingual students do you have?
10,000.
In grades one?
Pre-K through 12, through six, because we don't have bilingual past sixth grade yet.
So it's a small number of overs for the number of students.
Correct.
With this said, and no further conversation, it's recommended that the board or trustees approve a one-way dual language as a district.
As a district's bilingual program model?
Thank you, as the district's bilingual program model. I receive a motion to approve?
Yes, I have to make a motion to approve the one-way dual language as a bilingual program model at ALEVIAS D.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Moreno and second by Ms. Wynn. All in favor? That would be a 7-0.
Thank you so much for your support, for all of our students at ALEVIAS D. Rick was out of the room, is there another question? Oh, he wanted to make sure everyone saw his level of support. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I come in after this? You said something about dual language is not offered in the, in the children's school. So that makes a big choice that we need to exploit, so our families know that it's a little bit for those kids.
All right, board. Now we are at item number 11 on the agenda. So board members, give me just one quick second. I think what I want to start with is the, with the committee report, but let me start off by redefining once again. I am excited, I'm very pleased to see committees working, and I'm excited, more and even more excited, to know that our board members want to work with committees, and that they're taking the effort to study and to do more. And I think they've been quite busy. This year, I was very pleased that we made some changes, and Ms. Butler's out of the room, but I want to say thank you so very much. She sent out those documents to the committee, so we need to go ahead and review those. And I'm pretty sure that's on your.
Over the afternoon.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to let the board be aware, because that information did not come to you in board notes, but Mr. Moreno and Ms. Butler did send all the notes and everything that we collected last year on, on the super-tender evaluation. So I'm going to ask, Ms. Key, you want to go ahead and talk about the super-tender evaluation?
I'm not going to talk much, because we talked about it a little bit last time, and I see you looking at your super-tender.
Did you just bring the?
Can you turn your mic on?
Sorry. And you?
I gave this document out at the workshop on March 5th, and if you weren't there, it should be in your box. Has everybody gotten the document that I put in everybody's box? Sorry, I gave it to Jessica to give to everyone. If you'll look at the timeline, you'll notice we're a little bit behind. So if y'all could go over this, and I know it's a lengthy document, but a lot of it's repetitive, if you would go through this and mark comments and suggestions and questions that you have, then the committee can move forward with this work on creating a final document. It is very prescriptive, but part of what I would like is to keep the board accountable is to make sure that we're following the process and not just flying by the seat of our pants and doing this. So I'm hoping to bring this to the April 16th board meeting after committee will set it, and will set the suggestions for a vote on whether to proceed with this. Rick wanted me to point out that in creating this document, I researched evaluation documents from the Texas Association of School Boards, from Dallas Independent School District, from Fort Worth Independent School District, I can't remember, Zellulick and the Panhandle, and several other school districts, to see what their instruments look like. Also looked at our commitments that we made toward our vision and statements and core beliefs in making this statement, and also, as we agreed, tried to look at it through the lens of equity, to make sure that we were creating a document that was usable and fair. And it was a lengthy process to do that research, but I don't mind, because it needs to be right. And so if anybody has had an opportunity to look at it, please submit your questions to me tonight. And if not, and I'm going to close my eyes when I say this, because I don't want to see your faces, if I could have it back this week, it would be most helpful. So let me, let me add some quick notes. I asked, and I'm glad you're back, Ms. Butler, I was, I shared while you were out, that I really appreciate all of the documents that you made sure that we. that I really appreciate all of the documents that you made sure that we received, um, when you were the, uh, chair of the committee and helping us to get to, um, um, through that process. And we began working on some of the processes, but we didn't nail them down. I appreciate as well some of that thought that was put into place here. I'm gonna apologize to both of you as, as committee chairs because when I asked you guys to do this, I did not, I did not specify exactly what I expected. So let me say at this point, I, I do expect that we have an instrument. That was number one, we all talked about, we did not mind the previous instrument. And Ms. Moreno and I had worked for, what, years and years saying the instrument was, it was just that, it was, it had no real value, so to speak. So I'm, I'm appreciative of the instrument that we have. The other thing that I neglected to add, and, and Ms. Butler and Ms. Moreno, you remember when we had our meetings, one of the issues was, we're doing this at this moment in time as we're approaching that evaluation period? Looking at the instrument is about kind of the past, but looking at what the goals are and the things that we would like to put in place for the future, you have to kind of work dual in that role. That was the piece that I forgot to share. And that came out in our committee meetings that we need to, um, look at what we are doing now because you cannot change an instrument on the individual in the middle of that evaluation period. So, uh, with all of the brain power that you put into this document, uh, while the, while the board members are reviewing this, I'm gonna ask that we begin also getting information on what it is that we would like to have added as that appendix in the evaluation. Am I, am I more clear of what it is? Okay. Um, the other thing I want the board members to realize as you're reviewing this, and I think, um, Ms. Key, if I'm incorrect, let me know. As you're reviewing this document, it is just an instrument change. The items that are listed in, in the document are not unchanged from what we've already agreed with, with Mr. Chambers.
There, there are some highlighted points that are different that will not be included in this evaluation that are my suggestions for something we add for next year along with what other people want to do. And it is populated, um, the different domains are populated with items that are on the current evaluation instrument. And I also want to point out that since we're a team of eight, you've got to copy this, correct? I also want your feedback and comments on it.
And I think that, um, on the previous meeting before you brought to us, you said that we had already had that conversation.
Yes, and, and he was comfortable with using the instrument, you know? And he did say it, but it's my belief that we should stick to what he was currently accountable for and not add anything new.
But that, and that's what I wanted to make very, very clear to the board that these are not brand-new items in here. So don't think, oh my God, I have a new thing that I need to read. They are just placed in different areas. They're grouped, they're, they're grouped in different areas. So I'm gonna ask, um, board to please take note of this. In using this instrument, the way that the info, the information is calculated is going to be different than what it was last year. So use some thought. So when you're looking at this, you're not just looking at the items to see, um, you know, what's changed, but, um, you're not looking at just the content that's inside of it, but how to will be used as force of gravity. So be, be very conscious of that.
And I want to say at the last committee meeting, you suggested that some of the math was more than what people were accustomed to. So I'm gonna give permission to work with somebody from the accounting department and set up a spreadsheet that will do all that. If they put in their score, I don't see DM giving you passing.
Well, typically, that's, typically, that's, that's my, um...
That's your area?
No, 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 that's my survey person sitting in the back.
But she can create an Excel spreadsheet that will, what do they call it?
An auto sum of factor.
What? Well, not just auto sum, but it's a, an algorithm that goes in the, the thing that we're pulling them from here and here and here.
We'll get it figured out. But we need to have it. Absolutely, because the process has always been, and let me go ahead and share, the process has always been that all of the information and data is, even though we have a committee in place, let me make very, very clear and public, the committee goal and role is changing the evaluation, collecting the information for deciding on what we're gonna put for that appendix. Is it A of the appendix A? That's the, that's the goal and role.
And it's a lot of related information from this year right now.
Right, but the way that, um, our operating system and the, our policy, the way that we've done it, this information is always collected and sent to a single memory, it doesn't even come to the president. It goes directly to the secretary. So once the secretary receives all of the data information, she brings it, um, to the board.
Is there any rule restricting that I sit with her? Because it's new to show or is it monthly?
No, and, and that would be wonderful. I mean, you're the assistant, you're the assistant secretary. And I hope, and I hope, you know, uh, with last year, I'm able to make it, make that backup in, in place, so that's not a problem. Here's another thing that I'd like to bring forward, um, board. I'd like to call your attention to the items listed, and they're not by page number. Um, so I'm gonna ask you to go to your third, one, two, three, fourth page. Fourth page on the top where it says May. Please be aware, we have talked numerous times, Mr. Moreno and I, for the last five years have asked for something like this to happen. Last year, we made the commitment to do it. Um, and for whatever reason, it falls off. At the top where it says May, we're talking about the, the beginning of the evaluation. Remember, we do not want it to be a one-time event or a gotcha at the end. We want to have conversations with the superintendent along the way. So I want to make you aware that, Ms. Key, uh, put the information in there as to when, um, these conversations should be happening. I only made one suggestion to Ms. Key, and that was at the August. Instead of being August, to maybe push it, I say September or, or, or October because of the things that are going on. If you're, if we're deciding to have those conversations along the way, we're, um, probably gonna have to put something in place in our operating system how that happens. Because we don't want, um, to rush it to be a 15-minute conversation or a 30-minute conversation. But as you can see, where we are now, if we were to do that at this time of night, I need people to be committed, whether I'm board president or not. As a board member, we need to be committed if we're going to sit and have conversation. Um, partly, I mean, that's what happened with employees along the way. And we would like to see that. So be very conscious. Um, I think, Ms. Key, I was kind of pushing back on, wait a minute, we can't do it at these certain times because there are certain things that goes on in the district by calendar. So be very, very, uh, conscious of that. Yes, we can have those conversations on a board workshop. We just need to be very conscious about what's on the calendar and when that's going on. The other thing that I'd like to point out that Ms. Key added, and I'm gonna give great, uh, apology publicly. Um, she suggested a protocol to be put in place in the beginning. I did not understand what it was that she was requesting. But, um, I would like for you all, where's the protocol, Ms. Key, listed?
It's at the, um...
It was at page one.
Or it says page one, but it was at page one.
Okay.
At the first page one.
At the first page one? Okay, so let's be, um, let's consider, yes, for the first page one, consider the general protocols. Um, in the years past, Mr. Moreno and I have spent four hours, eight hours, you know, and it was, it was not a good feeling to have the board say long hours. It, it left a bad impression, I will say that. And it was not, it was just the fact that I felt like we had brand-new board members. And I think we had a good conversation out of, I think because of that, we're, we are where we are now.
Yeah, that, that situation, I know. Um, I have friends, I asked the staff members and some of the directors, like, well, you don't, meant so long with what's going on. Are y'all about to can them or get rid of them or whatever the thoughts were? But it wasn't, it was in the past, we spent three days, four hours each day doing it. And by the time we got to about 11 o'clock, we're like, what the heck? Let's just stay and get this done with it. And we didn't stay until, you know, I know some people had a pen. The next guy, he was grand opening for the CTE. Had to be working six, we left at five. You know, it was just, had to get it done, you know? Just didn't want to have to do this. So it worked out, I think, as a team of eight to, to, to get that initial, um, basis to, to look at that. I want to make comment about this, um, this packet of information. I think it's extraordinary work. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward to us, um, perfecting it, looking at it, working at it. Because we got people from around the state that do not have a program, um, a tool like this. Our current tool is actually, I think, H D U created. And I think I talked to him a few weeks back. He says, he gets calls every day from districts looking for a tool. And that's what basically we've, you know, provided them that tool. But this is, I think, is gonna be just so over the top, um, great. And it, and it leads to not just that one evaluation and discussion, it's gonna lead to three more discussions throughout the year that's, I think, to me, more meaningful of the team of eight discussions of where we're moving and where we're going each time, especially if the board members come on in November or, you know, the following two years or whenever that comes up. But, uh, but I think it's a good conversation. So looking forward to the conversation with Ms. Key.
Thank you. I'll take it on the road to task.
I think so.
Once you work out all the mods.
One other thing that I'd like to point the board's attention to is Appendix A worksheet. And it's, uh, towards the back, Appendix A worksheet.
It's the last, it's the last section. And this is just the metrics, it's not a worksheet, will be scored.
So, uh, board, I also had, um, Ms. Carmelita at the last minute, thank you so very much, to, uh, print out a document in which we, uh, did an overview. We, remember, we had a team of eight with, uh, CRSS. And they brought an instrument that would be very, very helpful. So what I would like, and I would suggest, um, Appendix A kind of resembles something like this where an actual goal or a specific, not, I know that when we have the meetings and we have conversation, about 10 or 20 different items fall out. But I think as well, we tried to work out to what was the three top things that we expected. So I'd like to see the three top things to be put in this kind of format. So that'd be very...
I think the board commitments is important.
Absolutely, but, um, putting it in that format where, absolutely. So putting it in that format which, um, um... Remember, this was just a, um, this was just an overview from CRSS from our training. Uh, it was a suggestion. So it was just, um, they did not give that.
We got it in email though, so we have to complete that.
Okay, so she said it's in, it's in an email. So remember, it's in a folder like that. And that's all that she gave.
Yeah, we were putting it in board notes as an addition.
So if we can, can take that and send out a view to the, to the, I'll put it in another, another board notes.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Key? I, I think I pointed out about five different things, and that was, um, the, you said the timeline, everyone would have a timeline which we're trying to maintain to get this done. The goal is to make sure that the instrument is in place and is approved by the board so that we can, um, complete the evaluation for this year. But in addition to that, I've asked that we go ahead and begin looking at the goals that are gonna be set for 2019, 2020.
And, um, one of the things that I asked Mr. Chambers when I was meeting and recording this was to deliver a state of the district presentation. And I know that we've seen that in, in other districts, and it's never been done anyway.
Um, because sometimes, um, board presidents want to deliver a state of the district.
Maybe we should have a state of the district for both.
Absolutely.
And I was just thinking more from the, um, the data standpoint of our performance. And, and also as a time, because the next meeting we have after that will be the board workshop where we do the evaluation that we can get the notebooks, we've got an invisible timeline, to get the, uh, those notebooks together for documentation of the initiatives that have been done. April 16th. That's coming up fast. One of the things we talked about too is making sure that there's not additional information in there that's not relevant to the evaluation instrument. And save those, those other informations which are important for our presentations during the board when people are presenting about their...
In order, in order to, in order to do that, we would, I just need to know the charter and prove something that resembles what you have. And we could leave some of that to them now. Because typically, boards start doing that.
Absolutely. It's changing.
But, but indicators, you know, most of those.
Right.
And the content that you provide is pretty much gonna be the same because there are no changes.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think, they were... I don't think that's...
As long as I can get the entry and the piece together and be done.
I think we're good.
And that's, that's the just what I'd really look at a little bit more because the information was all there. Finding that sometimes evens stuff that wasn't relevant to the evaluation was a little bit challenging.
So I was gonna share, I was gonna share with, uh, that we participated with the state of the, um, state of the districts when Fort Ben used to do it with the three superintendents when they did for the business entities, remember? Stafford, Stafford, Fort Ben, uh, K D. But typically, when they did the state of the districts, they did them collectively.
Yeah, I did a couple of the four things. There was, you know, market, a little bit, the markets a little bit, four things. So, yeah, not specific for...
But it's a, it's a, it's a thought and it's an attitude. So board, as we've, um, talked about in details this document, if there's anything that you're not clear on, have questions about, not comfortable with, please send an email. You can send, you can either email, um, Ms. Key or myself, or you can send it to Mr. Chambers so they can go out and board notes to everyone. Okay, not, not here to keep a lid on.
Yeah, I, I do have board notes too, and everybody knows that process of the thinking.
Absolutely, but what I'm saying is, is board, for the questions, if the questions come through, you as a committee chair, they are free to communicate that information to you. Absolutely, and it, and the way it goes out to the board is through the board notes. Is there anything else, um, on that?
I know I'm forgetting something, but as you read through it, you have questions, text me or call me or email me.
Right, the deadline to, to get your feedback is about the end of this week because we want to get back on the timeline. And you'll receive communication in, um, board notes on where we, where we stand with, if there's any adjustments. Okay. Ms. Rowe?
Yes, um, so...
Microphone. Ms. Rowe, Ms. Rowe, you're going to be reporting on which committees?
So the RFI, council, the board council search committee. Um, and so me, uh, my committee, which consists of myself, Ms. Key, trustee Key, and trustee, um, I'm not talking, yeah. Um, we, um, we met on March before. Um, and the goal of our, the goal of our meeting was to draft the timeline and also discussion of criteria, which we did accomplish both of those. That information was sent out. Um, and, uh, we also, we, uh, we wanted an RFI sent out. Um, and we kind of had to go back and forth with it just a little bit. Um, the original RFI was not quite what we were, we were expecting it to be, but it did get sent out last week. And the deadline to, um, submit and return, uh, anyone that was interested was, um, Monday, yesterday. Um, and so those are being gathered. And I actually reached out to my committee to find a, a date that we can meet because we do need to meet and review those documents and then select our top ones and, and discuss and, and move on with our, our timeline.
I want to apologize, I was not here at the last, um, workshop due to a 30-year wedding anniversary. Um, I had to keep mom happy. Um, if not, I, I don't get to come here. Um, then the week before, I was unable to, these are work that held me over and so forth. So, um, I've got some of the, I guess, um, information, I guess, regarding the, uh, RFI or requesting of that. Um, the only concerns I have is, um, our current attorney wasn't, um, it was on before I came on board, so I'm not really sure how the inception of, of that and the process, and I'm hearing a little more of that, of how that's happened. But I'd have some more discussion if we, if we can because I'm concerned on how are we able to request, um, information from other... Because I'm concerned on how are we able to request information from other attorneys or individuals or attorney groups if we haven't had clear conversation about what we're expecting, what are the duties, what are the jobs, what are responsibilities of our current, um, counsel in, in regards to working for the district, working for the board. What I'm talking about, district led board council, I think is what we're, we're looking at. Um, so I'm just curious on how are we able to request information? What do we put out? You know, I mean, we may say, okay, here, we need a basket of apples. But, you know, but we come outside and know we really want more just and let the reasons go back to the board and wasting time, wasting money, things like that. So I don't know. I haven't seen anything on the board notes of direct conversation of what our council's not doing, what, what steps have been done to correct that, um, what discussions have been done, and then what we should be expecting from it. Um, I'm not saying that our R F I is not maybe down the road somewhere. But, um, I think at this time, we need to have more meaningful discussion. And I commit to be in here, um, you know, in those twelve months when these have occurred. So I have promised to make sure, so I'll definitely, you know, to make every effort to be here for those conversations. So that's just my, my comment on this. And thank you, Amanda, for the work you've done and doing that bit back. Maybe you can answer that, Ms. Williams on.
Yeah, here's what I'm going to answer by saying, um, when the item was on the agenda for discussion, uh, because it was a problematic consultation with the attorney. A lot of the information that was discussed, it was discussed in, um, in closed session. So the detailed information about what was it that the board expected and what they wanted, those questions, we had an opportunity to send, uh, how long? About an hour or so with the attorney to, uh, talk about how long the firm has been here, uh, what was it that they, what was the guidelines? Because to my knowledge of board president, I've not seen the information. And that's what the question was to the attorney, what was the specifications? So, um, to my knowledge, it didn't exist. And so the, the question came out, what is the responsibility of the attorney to the board? He was able to answer specifically based upon the conversation that came out. It was then determined that the board had an opportunity to say, we're okay with whatever the processes are or meeting whatever expectations or have an opportunity to, um, um, go for an R F I just to request information. And that is where it is now and requesting information to see what, what other firms offer. It's one thing to be, you know, okay with who you have. But if you're not sure where your relationship began or where it's going, then it was just an opportunity to do that. Um, the, as far as for, um, detailed and information that's coming back, whether that goes in board notes, I've made the decision as board president to make sure that that information is handled, just like any other procurement, um, um, option that, that has gone on in this way. Because when you go and ask for information, you make those particular changes, those are items that are public information. So we want to make sure that we're, that we are in compliance even as board members. Because it is the board's right and option to ask for it on board council. It's one of the few things that we're, we're able to do.
No, I understand that. I just didn't know what part of maybe this probably is, should be sent out for R F I, or it's sent out for other. What information are we asking? So it's like, that R F I, we need a vendor to provide us a case paper, you know, let's, what do you decide? Let's kick it out. What are we asking for?
So in the board notes that came out last week, it gave the specifications of what it was that would request this from, from the, um, from the vendors. So, and, uh, no, actually, it wasn't like, uh, last week. It was a board notes before spring break. That information was detailed, uh, because it was released on, do you remember the date that the R F I was released? It's Charles in the morning? Okay.
Now, that's been two weeks since it's been out. So it was like at least two weeks period.
It was, uh, released, let's see, it was released on Tuesday, March the fifth. So, and not only was it, uh, released, uh, the information was sent to the board as to what it was, um, the information, the R F I, copy of the R F I was sent to the board. A copy of what was posted on the website also went to the board. A list of all the potential firms was sent to the board. Um, am I missing any other document that was added? Okay.
There's like a hundred something, it's a little chunked.
Right. So all, all those documents have gone out now that the, um, R F P has posed, uh, as a part of the, um, procurement process. And because the committee is in charge of that, that detailed information only goes to the committee. The committee is going to review. I think, um, one of the things that Ms. Key had brought out, that you guys began talking about it for, um, criterias, right? You guys were setting criterias on what it was that we were looking for in a, um, in a firm. In addition to that, I think Ms. Rowe was asking for questions. If anybody else had any other thoughts or, um, that they wanted to add to those criterias. So now we're at the point that, um, those firms have responded. The committee is going to get the information. I think I talked to Mr. Woods. Uh, Ms. Rowe, you were asking the question about, um, how to receive it. That information, uh, will be received to the committee electronically and secured electronically to the committee members only.
Okay, to the committee members only?
To the committee members only. And because remember, every, every portion of it is transmissible, so. And which I'm okay with that for transparency, that's what we want. So, um, once the committee members receive that, you can go and look at your timelines for reviewing. And I presume you guys are going to review all of the, um, the ones that were submitted. I think I had an email that said, was it seventeen or nineteen? That was seventeen that, um, that responded. So of those seventeen, you guys make a decision on your top, whatever fives that you're going to do. And then the goal is to go down to the three and then interview and bring your recommendations back to the board. Am I, am I right? What else?
I, I thought this was the exploration phase and it's moving a little bit fast for me.
No, I just, I just was like speeding out of a timeline. But you guys are still through the, you have to receive the documents and see them.
Okay, and I also want to point out that current council had the option, I don't know if you did or not, I've seen it, to submit the R F I as well. And for the committee to bring the recommendations to the board about, do we want to do this? Do we want to work with another person in their firm? It's separated from that person in addition to looking at other R F Is in that transparency thing. But it is moving quickly.
Absolutely. And let me tell you why it's moving quickly. It is moving quickly because we want to change the evaluation of superintendent. We cannot do that without some legal counsel or guidance on adding anything additional to the contract.
To probably do that with a counsel. So we would choose to either go with current legal counsel that we have if we're not choosing someone else right away. So we do have counsel to go through that process. We just don't have new counsel or a different counsel to go through that process.
And absolutely, that is, that is true. And we've had counsel, that, that particular counsel, um, available to us when we've asked to, uh, add some accountability to the contract in the last three years that I've been with her.
Can I say something?
Sure.
First of all, I'm a little bit concerned because I might, I know that I was not here because I have to say. But then another thing is, it's like totally brand new to me. And like Ms. Key said, everything is like moving very quickly. And my concern is if we get a new counsel, would that counsel know anything about the school district? Everything, you know? And then another thing is, you know, due to the budget cut, a lot of things. So my second concern is, you know, with me, everything is about the money. And the taxpayer pays and the money will go to programs to think for the student. So, you know, like, of course, I'm not a good committee. But my concern is how much does it cost and it costs extra? And we need to get that money to go into that. And then that person, whoever you got to pick, we know what's going on inside out, everything. And then, you know, like, how much does it cost us per year for an extra counsel? And, you know, like, instead of that, you can use that money for other things, you know, like, to help with the school district.
I agree. I always am thinking about the money. I think any money that we save can go to students. But I also agree that you could, you could pretend that it's, you know, that we are fine and never know that you could have been saving. The other thing that I think about when we talk about the money is the fact that we're not asking a board counsel to do any more extra work than the one individual. All we're saying is that one individual currently handles all the H R matters. And the only thing that that conversation brought out was the fact, do you have a board counsel? Do you have someone lays some focus to help you with your policies? To help you with your contract reviews? To help you to develop your equity policy? That, that was the only thing. And, and by no means, let me make it very clear, by no means did I say that I was dissatisfied with who we currently have. I am just saying that at some point, I'm preaching, I'm walking the walk that I always walk. To, so many times we hear, and I wish that Mr. Woods was here because he would say, yes, I'm always on him, about having relationships with people for twenty years and never doing a check and evaluation. Marriage isn't evaluated. I don't understand how, when it comes down to something as critical as our legal services for our district, that we do not do a check about, and that's where I am. We're, we went through our operating procedures, we go through core values, we go through all of those things. I can't understand why we would get to the legal part and not do a consideration, um, for something like that.
Ms. Williams, I'd like to interject if, if, uh, sorry. I'd like to interject, I've been on the board, um, almost the same day, issue. So we both signed on the same day. Um, and I, I have been board president in the past. Um, another time when I was board president, we had conversations in the board, um, obviously, different members on the board, um, if there was concerns regarding contract or any issues and so forth. The board bringing recommendations, thought we had discussions and so forth. And as a board president, that's the responsibility of a board president to have that conversation with the attorney to get, to get done. Um, and then communicate to them. And then that, um, board counsel that discussed with superintendent and whether he discussed with them or he has his own attorney, whether it's superintendent or past superintendent, that's just the way it has happened. Um, you know, we had a couple of past board members that are very knowledgeable in the law. You know, Dr. Hanson, you know, um, I think y'all probably never know half of it till he forgets because he's such a bright man. Um, but we've never had that question. And, and we've talked about this for the last year, that the new board members that have come on have asked more questions, more detail, more add them, or, you know, digging deep into what our responsibility is. And we're like, you know, and a lot of our conversations have been, you know what, we haven't really thought about that. We may have thought about it, but as collectively as a board, it wasn't an issue. So never went forward to do that. Um, so I, I know, and I, I've been, you know, I mean, I can't go detail of what was in executive session or closed session. But I don't remember recalling any discussion that we've had where saying, hey, we need you to help us with core values, work us with contracts, work us with these things specifically to our board counsel to, to help us that. Um, if that conversation's been happened by you or a past president, um, and that's not happening, then yeah, that needs to come to the board in a meeting and let's talk about it. Let's do this, put guidelines to them and say, hey, this is what we need to do. You have this time. You know what I'm saying? I just, I'm still going back to we haven't had that conversation. You know, and maybe y'all haven't, you know, I know you've tried to reach out to me. We just haven't connected to maybe update on some things that happened or discussion at board level. Um, but, you know, I, I agree that we're moving a little fast. You know, I'm not saying, I'm not totally opposed that we not look at counsel. And we, you know, I'm reading through this, I'm saying we're buying it, we're not that, we're just seeking information from them and trying to collect some information. But I just, again, going back to, I guess, with our superintendent evaluation, we don't know what we're really wanting. I don't think as a board, the discussion to have that. And I think this, I just heard this, um, Dr. Trump wasn't there. And so two of us weren't there at one of those meetings. So I'm just, you know, asking if we can maybe slow a little bit and have some more conversation.
We can have, we can have conversations, but we can have conversations, I have no problem with that. But as board president and have been now the fourth year, I've received from this board and the previous board a desire to, um, make sure that there was some accountability in Mr. Chambers' contract. So I, I will publicly say that, and I can ask any other board member, that has been the question. And that has been a concern about making sure that there was some accountability. We as a board, I have no legal background. I don't have the skill or ability. I can talk about goals. You yourself would say, if it's not in writing and then we don't put it in there, it's not going to happen. So I come from that position of saying that the time is now, it's, it's possible to do that. But I always say, as board president, if there's not a desire to do that, I'm one vote. I'm one person and we could not do it. But I'm going to say publicly, I, I, I made an effort. And, you know, there are some times as board president, you can't go in this clothes. I mean, this is a sensitive conversation. I want to say thank you for allowing us to talk about you as if you're not even in the world, you know? But.
But that is already a process. This is a process.
Right, right.
It's whether it's, you know, him now or ten years from now, it's on the board.
Absolutely.
Some presidents are trying to establish some.
Absolutely.
But what I'm hearing from the board, from at least three of us, um, that, you know, it's a little fast. It's, let's, let's, let's have some more conversation and doing this. And I understand what you're saying, but again, as, as board president, we've had this conversation. We've done that, not talking about being a board president, but you as a board president and previous board president. And some things have just never happened. Today going.
Absolutely.
We've had, every year, we're planning to have three additional sessions, discussions as a team of eight. And we've had once, you know, in how many years? So, I mean, I, I'm proud of, yes, we're moving forward. But, you know, I'm just, again, requesting as one board member, let's slow down a little.
But also I see the, the problem is like, you know, even though, you know, we request from the administrative, we're not clear, like today, but instead, now they get what we want. And the same thing with the legal counsel, whoever, we have to tell them, okay, look, I want this. I need help in this, I need help in that, you know? Because I've been here four years and, you know, honestly, I never heard of it, you know? So when you don't hear that and all suddenly, you know, you're out of the flow and you go like, okay, I want this, I want that. But then if I don't protect anybody, but the thing is, you know, like, if our current counsel or whoever, you request that for the past two years, three years, never happened, then you seek a new legal advice. But if you never go to the detail, tell them or tell the administrative what we really want, then like earlier, I mentioned to this, Eva, I go, you know, like, we need the detail, you know, the baseline, whatever, the detail, the demographic, before we hit with the presentation. So we can read it and we can understand it. So their job is to provide the same thing to the legal counsel. But the problem is that we never ask. So if we don't ask, no one can read our.
So I'm, I'm going to go back and say, it's unfortunate as your board president having to work with board counsel, have not had any other opportunity other than this one. Because we haven't talked about board council in a public session before. So if you're asking if, uh, I made some requests and they were fulfilled, you want me to answer? I would tell you, no, they have not. Okay, they have not. And, and based on Ms. Trump, Ms. Moreno being on the board, have we not tried to work towards accountability in the superintendent's contract? Have there not been a conversation about that?
There had been discussion with Ms. Williams, but it hasn't been in mind, in my recognition of it, of, of this is what the board councils want to assist us with. We are looking at tag me, we're looking at outside sources, we're looking at C R S S, we're looking at other districts and what they're doing. But it's never, I don't remember having conversations saying, counsel, we need help with this. We need you to go research this, we need you to find out and bring this data backwards to hold our superintendent accountable, and this is what we're doing. And then pay him to do that, um, to do that. I remember having those conversations. We've talked about accountability. We've talked about that for six years, eight years, you know, every year and based on that. So I think it's a good start. I'm just saying, if we could, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed, completely opposed to it. I just, you know, not necessarily just giving him a fair shake, but let's have conversation ourselves so we know where we're going and be able to direct that conversation. Sorry, Bill.
I think it's always a good practice to check out what's always been done the same way for years and years, so, I'm not opposed to the process of setting the criteria that we want our board counsel to have, of looking at other people, I'm just saying that we're moving very quickly in a short amount of time, and we need to make sure that, what I'm trying to say here is that we just need to slow our roll, I guess is what I'm saying.
We could, we could do that, we could, we can absolutely do that, and I, I want it to be said publicly that the board said they wanted to slow the roll, and then it's not on me if you're here another year and it hasn't happened, it's not on me, I'll, I'll leave it at that. So, if nothing else, is there anything else stated?
And I would highly recommend in the future, you know, if, you know, like, I know even as a board president, you're a board vice president and all of that, but especially with legal counsel and everything, we need all of us to know, and then we can have in the room and say, hey, can you let us know about the, or the legal, whatever, you know, because what happens is, if you just only contact the legal counsel and whatever the counsel taught you, oh, we have no idea, no one talking about, so, you know, like, if we can have like, it's not like workshop or a session.
So, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this, what I'm going to do is, I am going to talk to the current counsel that we have, and discuss a legal method in which we can have those discussions that you guys are asking for. To my knowledge, when, uh, Ms. Moreno, you were board president, did you at any time sell the board off the conversation that you had with the legal counsel?
Um, actually, I guess, in conversation we did, and it's all very transparent with that, in a conversation, we, I mean, we did have new, four new board members, and we're not going through, it's a different time, you know, and doing that, it wasn't so much issue, we had experienced board members of ten, fifteen, twenty years, you and I were the ones that were, you know, the newbies of six years, you know, or something of that sort, you know what I'm saying, so it was a different time, it's not really a comparison, but I would like to make comment this way before you do hit that gavel, is that, and again, since you are making statements of public, um, in that, and just so we're, we're clear, um, you know, we had discussions prior to elections and this, you know, you know, um, we talked about this and the future of the board, and how are we gonna work, we transparent, to help with these new board members, to get them on track and so forth, and I think we partnered very well to try to get that process going, um, and they've exceeded us, I mean, some of them, you know, I'm learning from them every day, um, so, it's, it's just good stuff that they're bringing to the board. Um, but you asked me if I would support you, and I said, yes, I support you, for another year as president, I'll support you, because you've done a great job, you're communicating, you're doing these things with us, okay? But it concerns me, Ms. Williams, as you as board president, saying, okay, make it public, if nothing goes wrong, then it's not on me, we're a team of eight, and if I don't pull, if I'm a weak link, we're all a weak link, you know what I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm a perimeter, I deal with what people say, and when they come and talk to me directly in their face, I'm listening to their eyes, it, it doesn't sit well with me in doing that. I'm just having this conversation, so, to do this, so, you're our captain, and you're leading us on a boat, and we steer you all the way, you're in charge as a captain, get us back on track, and I trust you, and it'll do that for us.
And that I intend to do, so when, when I said that publicly, I said that it is ten o'clock, six hours asleep, I'm, I'm just real, real about it, ten, ten o'clock, six hours asleep for me, working a long day, I probably should not use those close words. What came out was, it is frustrating for each year that I work as a team of seven with the board, and they suggest that one something, and with all transparency that I could pull, we came to this moment, and I am okay with the board saying, you want to pump your brakes, I'll be saying that we are still in a public setting, in a public meeting.
And maybe I, I take fault, and, and we had a conversation with, I mean, I stirred up and, you know, and, you know, maybe they keep track of us, and to put us, to stick us with the support that we need to...
So, what I'm gonna say to the board, so as, as we're wrapping up, Mr. Moreno, if, if that's okay, what I'm gonna say, board members, if you have any criteria to suggestion of what it is that you suggest and would like in the, uh, board council, please send that information to, uh, please add Mr., um, why can't you do that? I can't, right, send that to Mr. Chambers, and he will, he will work with the committee chair just as he's always done, you guys are good, Ms. Bro.
Yes.
Okay, so send that information directly to Mr. Chambers, and then it will get to the committee chair, and somehow we'll deal with it in board notes, okay? Is there any other item on the agenda? Let me say thank you so very much for everyone's hanging with us, and to, to you all too as well, I hope that you got something out of this. This is, this is a learning district, we're ever learning, and I'm, I'm proud to be with these board members to learn as well. With that said, at ten oh one, meeting adjourned.